I see you, because your videos are on, by the way.
Let me turn it off.
Okay, so you are like literally a panelist, okay?
We're seven points.
So you need to get out.
Yeah. Oh. Okay.
Okay, good.
Just leave.
Please.
All right, all right, we're gonna get started here. Thank you so much, everyone. Welcome to April 21st, 2025 San Rafael City School Board Meeting. And we are going to kick off the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. And I have Ellen D. and is it Romi?
Yeah.
You want to stand up? And we're gonna wait for you to tell us to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be ready to go when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you so much, Ellen D. and Romi, good job. All right, before we get started, I just wanted to, I wanted to say something on behalf of Cabinet, our Superintendent, our Board, our community. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the heartbreaking tragedy that has deeply impacted our greater Marin community. Over the weekend, a devastating car accident involving six students from Archie Williams High School claimed the lives of four young people, while two others remain hospitalized. Our sincere condolences and sympathies go out to the families and friends, the entire Archie William and Tampa Pike Union High School District community during this very incredible, difficult time. We recognize that in our community, there are many connections to those involved, and many of our own youth may be in need of support at this moment. Our high school wellness centers, as well as mental health services at the elementary and middle schools, sorry, I'm just getting a little, remain available to any students or staff who may need someone to talk to. I know that our San Rafael City community is united in keeping these students and their families, and your thoughts, and sending compassion. I hope we can just take a moment here of silence and just share that we care and support our community. Thank you so much. Okay. Oh, all right, so announcement of reportable closed session actions. We have, oh, just a minute, there we go. Item 3-3, Special Education Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation. It, the motion passed, and the motion was moved by trustee Rotis and seconded by trustee Kerner. Also, item 3-4, Special Education Anticipated Litigation and Government Code Section 5495, 6.9, Student versus San Rafael City Schools. The motion passed, moved by trustee Rotis, seconded by trustee Lau. Also, item 3-5, Student Services, Code 48915, Consideration of Student Expulsion Case. That motion passed unanimously, moved by trustee Rotis, seconded by trustee Lau. Item 3-6, Government Code 54957, Personnel Matter, Public Employee Appointment Title. And we have here our new principal, Katie O'Donnell, as our new principal of Laurel Del. Can you please stand up? Would you like to say something?
I, I'm just very excited, so, yes, thank you so much for having me. I'm honored, and yeah, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Oh, sorry, that was moved by trustee De Niva Marsh and seconded by trustee Rotis. Thank you, sorry about that. Okay. And now I need an approval of the agenda.
At this time, though, staff would like to pull certain items from.
Oh, that's right, thank you, thank you.
The first one is item 25.
25, okay. Okay.
Yeah, is this where we pull another item?
Yes.
Send number 34, 35, and 38.
So, go ahead.
Is this the time when it can ask for all future contracts? Is this the time that we would do the motion to do that? Or bring up another?
I think what you can do is once we get to that.
Do it.
Okay, great, so we will be pulling item number 25 for future meetings, and we will discuss in 34, 35, and 38. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, so, where are we at? Superintendent, Approval of Resolution 2425-58 in Support and Recognition of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month.
So I have before you, staff has presented a resolution that supports and recognizes of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage. A month that provides an opportunity for all people to appreciate the achievements and contributions of Jewish Americans throughout history. And we here at San Rafael City School encourage our staff and faculty members to remember, celebrate, and educate. Educate future generations about Jewish Americans and the importance of their roles in communities across the nation. And as a grandmother, being a man who is Jewish, with this resolution is very important personally. So staff is asking that the board through the resolution supporting recognition of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you, Superintendent. Can I ask any comments or questions about Resolution 2425-58 in support of Jewish American Heritage Month?
No comment. No questions.
No question, well, thank you so much for bringing this forward. And, yes, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, moved by trustee De Niva Marsh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Rotis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes, okay, great, Superintendent again. Resolution 2425-60 in Support of Recognizing May as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
So, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is very important in our community, and it's time to celebrate significant contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the history of the United States. Join together each day and contribute to these contributions, and we also would like to uphold the stories that are tied to our U.S. history regarding Asian Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders. So staff is therefore requesting that the board approve its recognition of May 2025 to 60 as American, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Motion to approve.
Are we commenting, are we commenting? Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Spring break, all right, since I spoke up. I, I'm, I'm, just similarly with all, the same vein for all three resolutions. Resolutions are paired with action, resolutions are a statement of our values. These resolutions are an opportunity to connect our students and our staff and our community to uplift things that are important in our history, moment in time. And I know I didn't make a comment with our Jewish American History Proclamation that just passed, but the same similar for all three. If there are events that are happening at our schools or our community adjacent, please send it to our Board so we can uplift. I know that at different school sites like Terrelanda High School, there is a Jewish student affinity group, and so it's just really key that we connect what's happening on our local campuses to these resolutions that are brought for staff. With Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander enough, it doesn't dawn on me that I'm super proud that this resolution is upfront as one of the first Filipina electeds in San Rafael in general. But I think the key part is that there's a resurgence and a vibrancy of our Asian student unions that have been uplifted at both Terrelanda High School and San Rafael High School. In fact, they've worked in collaboration this past fall, not fall, early this year for Lunar New Year. So just because these affinity groups or these moments happen at our different sites, there's a lot of opportunities for collaboration between our schools as well as our community partners.
Thank you, trustee De Niva Marsh. Any other comments?
No comment, I second.
Oh, perfect. All those in favor, they aye.
Aye.
Great, that motion passes, and that was, sorry, by trustee De Niva Marsh and also trustee Dr. Lau. Okay, number three, Student Services. We have Resolution 2425-59 in Support of Recognition May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'm very excited that you bring this one.
Yes, thank you very much. As everyone here knows, caring for our mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. As we were talking just a short while ago, when tragedy strikes, we really see how important it is to have our school counselors, our wellness staff, and really all of the support that we have within our school district and our community. For May being Mental Health Awareness Month, the San Rafael School District is committed to supporting the emotional well-being of every student, educator, and staff member across the elementary, middle, and high schools, and support the efforts to reduce the stigma of getting mental health support through our wellness centers with our school counselors and through our social emotional curriculums and activities at the school sites. And I would ask that you approve this Resolution 2425-59 in Support and Recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you, any questions?
No comments, I understand that the county is doing a lot of work for May Mental Health Month. I myself am involved with the Health and Human Services Department, and we see very much there is stigma, and it brings me great pride to bring recognition to mental health this May month.
Thank you so much, trustee, any other comments?
Thank you for bringing it forward, very important issue. Glad you're representing us.
Thank you, and I'm very proud that our schools have school counselors and mental health awareness, and so thank you for bringing this forward. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
This second motion.
Okay, moved by trustee Rotis, seconded by trustee Kerner, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, thank you so much. Okay, now we are on to announcements, and I would love to start with our labor partners. That's okay.
Okay, so we have Morgan Agnew on there, so I'm gonna promote him.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight with us. I think Christina's watching, and we miss you. Hope the kiddos are good.
All right, we good to go?
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Morgan Agnew, President of the San Rafael Federation of Teachers. First, I must express our deepest sympathies and condolences for the horrible loss of life in the car accident that took place over the weekend. Our thoughts are with the students, their families, and the school community of Archie Williams High School. Second, I would like to take this opportunity to make a request of all members of this Board. The request is this: barring unforeseen circumstances, please serve out the entire term to which you have been appointed or elected. This should not be a divisive or controversial stance. When we as voters elect someone to office, we expect them to serve their entire term. We are understanding when they have a family emergency or are appointed to higher office. But generally speaking, we expect our elected officials to fulfill the commitments they ran on. Prior members of this Board have made something of a habit of resigning prior to the ends of their terms. Sometimes this was due to personal emergencies, but often it was for the stated purpose, sometimes even the publicly stated purpose, of allowing their fellow trustees to appoint a replacement. SRFT has long objected to this practice. It is fundamentally undemocratic. It is fundamentally undemocratic, robbing the voters of their right to compare candidates for an open seat, and instead bestowing upon one chosen candidate the armor of incumbency. If unchecked, this practice could turn this board into a self-propagating body. But this year, we learn about another danger of this practice: the risk that the remaining board members would not agree on a replacement, creating division, leaving us without a quorum, and wasting a hundred thousand dollars of our students' money on a special election. So our request to each of you is, please don't let that be your legacy to the board. Please serve the entire term to which you have been elected or appointed. Please don't be the one who puts us in that situation again. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Oh, I just wanna see if not, we're gonna go in the room. Is that okay?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you were looking for someone else on. Okay, great, great. I didn't know if you were talking to me. Sorry. SRTA? Yeah, you're doing great. You're doing great. I didn't know if I was waiting for you. Sorry.
Are we excited? Get up here.
I like the new, new look. Look, new color.
Thank you for recognizing.
Hey, I noticed it. I noticed. It looks good. I like the color. Thank you.
Saw the shout-out on your Instagram account. Appreciate the follow.
All right, good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Deaf Gaisels, and Cabinet. First, we would like to take a moment to unite with our union siblings, to acknowledge the tragedy that is the loss of any life, but especially young lives. SRTA shares our sincerest condolences to all affected and the community that grieves for the lives lost. I am Kelly Wayland, San Rafael Teacher Association Bargaining Chair and fourth-grade teacher at Coleman, representing our early intervention through eighth-grade educators this evening. Joining me tonight are some of the other members of our bargaining team: Molly O'Donohue, Sarah Cushman, and shout-out to Renee Romer, not be here today, as well as obviously Brianna Padilla, our president, who also sits at the table. Throughout the past few months, the SRTA bargaining team has met with the SRCS team for six sessions at the table. While we still have some work to do on Articles Nine and Seventeen for our System of Professional Growth and Peer Assistance and Review Program, we are proud of the tentative agreements that have been reached. At our member meeting last Tuesday, the bargaining team presented the partial TAs to our members, and voting for ratification was open for two days after that. I am excited to share that two hundred and five members voted, and the TAs were ratified with ninety-six point five percent yes votes. When the team and site representatives were presenting the TAs to the members, there were many positive reactions to the changes made specifically around time given to members at the beginning of the year to complete required trainings, time given for completing EL monitoring forms, and a step towards recouping some prep time for our Davidson Middle School teachers that was lost in the shift to the seventh-period schedule. I'd like to take a moment to highlight and appreciate the collaborative nature of negotiations. Collective bargaining for over two hundred and sixty members can be a balancing act at the best of times. However, our member voices were incredibly clear this year. Our educators needed a shift in working conditions that honored the increasingly complex nature of education. While we may not have always had the same ideas of how to achieve this, it was clear that the members of the SRCS team recognized and understood this goal. Additionally, we hope the collaboration was also felt by our SRCS counterparts as we discussed our shared concerns around the budgetary uncertainties of the future. As we have said many times to our members and the SRCS team, it is in all of our interests to have a financially sound district. While the intricacies of negotiation can be complex, compromise is at the core of bargaining. This year's TAs exemplify that spirit of give and take, where neither party achieved all of their initial goals but left with agreements that made progress and can continue to progress in the next round of bargaining. If I may, I'd like to take a moment to thank my SRTA bargaining team for all their hard work, very late nights, and amazing representation that our membership should be incredibly proud of for these amazing people. I wanna shout-out Brianna Padilla. Thank you for your absolutely fearless leadership of our union. I wrote it on the side. I would also like to thank the SRCS team: Darlene, We're Getting Our Flow, Bob, Stephanie, Alex Peck, who may or may not be. And Michael Statchen, and then various other people who came in and out to help out. This year had some notable moments, and we are thankful for the collaborative efforts that the SRCS team put forward. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you. I know that Tania might be late.
She's actually.
She's on.
She's on right now.
Okay, great. Now, I was gonna come back to her. Okay, great. Let's have her join us.
Tanya, you are on, if you can hear me.
I am.
Okay, we don't see you, but oh, there you are.
There we go. Sorry, I was in a CSEA meeting that I'm gonna jump on back once I'm done here, so I apologize for being late. Thank you. I appreciate the time. First off, I wanna begin tonight by recognizing the tragedy that happened in Archie Williams. Our condolences go out to the families and the community of the Tamapaias Unified School District, so just wanted to put that out there. We are all thinking of them as they have shown support to us in the past as well. We have had two full days of negotiations, and even though we still have a lot of work to do, I, our team is happy with the progress we have made in two days. The progress is due to both sides working collaboratively. We have a lot of work to do, but we have also gotten a lot of work done. And we look forward to continuing, we look forward to continue to move forward as we progress with negotiations. So thank you to the district board and the district leaders that sit on the negotiations team with us. Now, I would like to take this opportunity right now to formally, to make a formal invitation to all of our school board trustees, as well as to our superintendent Gaisels. As you know, Classified Employees Week is from May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five through May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. This year's theme is Trusted, Inclusive, United. What better way to show support to our classified than by visiting our classified at their work site? We were thinking of setting up site visits where our chapter vice president, Maria Rodriguez, and I take you around and have you meet our classified employees, and they can talk to you about some of the things they do to serve our students, families, and communities. Now, I understand that not all of you can make time to go to every single school site. That would just be a lot. The idea is to set up site visits for you within your areas. And then superintendent Gaisels, you can join wherever your schedule permits. And you know, Maria and I will come up with the details if that's, we feel it's a great way to honor classified during Classified Employees Week, and I know that they would love to see you come see them personally. So I hear a lot of that from our membership. So that is my report tonight.
Oh, thank you so much for joining us tonight, Tania. And I can't wait to join all of you during that week, so thank you for putting that out there. Thank you so much. Okay, so now it's time for our trustees. Trustee Lau, would you like to go, or do you want me to push on?
Sure, I'm happy to go. Thank you, Madam President.
Now, this is your fourth, third?
Third.
Yes, all right. Yes, yes, we're so excited to have you here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the time. Well, first of all, I also want to join the district and our labor partners here to acknowledge the six students and the family that impacted by the car accident on the past weekend. Has been on my mind the whole time, and I know that that impact is beyond just those family, but also other friends in the larger district. So I wanna express also my sincere condolences and sympathies to the family and friends, and also to wish the two that remain in the hospital a full and speedy recovery. I want to thank you, the district, for reaching out and to supporting our neighboring district during this very difficult time. I also want to especially thanks the mental health staff of our district for offering their service and support, the expertise to Tam district and other nearby district as well. As a parent myself, I think it's always, always really dear and close to my, my heart when we hear these accidents happen and how we can actually do to prevent it from happening again. This is count one accident too much, especially that the recent cyber truck incidents also in our nearby county as well in the East Bay. So I hope our district also could do something to do some lesson learned and see how we can educate our district, our students, and the family so that there's nothing similar to this incident would be happening again in our own district. With that, I, you know, we have been in breaks. This is only my third meeting, but the last few weeks has been very productive, very rewarding. So I wanna share a few things that I've done along with some of the trustees here as well. I attended the first district-wide reclassification ceremony. Really excited at the time, was able to witness and shake hand with two hundred and thirty-six students during the ceremony. I never really shook them any hands before, to be honest. So, but I'm very proud of them. As myself, also an English learner myself, so I know how important to them and to the family as well, and see them smile, the cheer, the teacher is there to support the family is very meaningful to me and to weakness. I also have a chance to meet with our district staff to understand the need of our community and the value of Community School Grant. We're impressive to see the developments over the years and the outcomes, so thank you. Okay, to share with me all the slide and all the information we need to Community School. I think he and I are following each other after a few days afterward, because we've been going to some open house, including the Laurel Del's Lions. I learned about the edible education program with the hands-on experience of the learn how to connect students to food, to nutrition, and the amazing cart that they have. I just couldn't believe that how many things they can kind of fit into that edible garden's cart to help to prepare the food for the after-school program. Also been to the, the Mr. Dragon's Open House, and we're impressed by the art show. I was very impressed to see all the work that they have put together. And also on April fourth, the Madrona Project Learning, project-based learning showcase. We learn about the CAFO, the Concentrate Animal Feeding Operations. Learn how some of the food is being produced in the U.S. The student have done a fantastic job putting the project together and the presentation. So it really changed how I look at fast food and try to, you know, think about the process behind as well. I have been to two education workforce housing presentation. One is actually part of my Rotary Club. From the Nevada School District, they came and make a presentation, so I learned a little bit more about their workforce housing development and also webinar produced by the CBSA to learn about the new study that just published about workforce housing. So that's my report.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. I know you've been busy, so glad to have you here. Okay, trustee Rota.
Well, first of all, I goes and said that I offer my deepest condolences and I pray for the peace of Archie Williams District and the parents who lost their children. It's extremely tragic, and I've been, I can't even imagine what they're going through. It has been a while since we have gathered for a board meeting, almost a month, and I'm happy to be back. I would like to take the time to congratulate all the students who were able to be reclassified at the district-wide ceremony a couple of weeks ago. It is a big accomplishment and a great privilege for me to be able to recognize our students' hard work and our teachers' instruction to get them there. I'm also happy to have attended the Heads Up Planning Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'm excited to participate this weekend. I invite you all to attend this Saturday, April twenty-sixth, from eleven a.m. to three p.m. at San Rafael High School, our wonderful carnival. I would like to acknowledge the work of the whole, of the Heads Up Foundation and the Jazz students and others who contributed to the sell raffle tickets, and would like to say that their work does not go unnoticed. Later that day, I also hope to attend the Cultural Fusion Fair here at Terrelanda High School. I'm excited to pass the resolution in recognition and support of the Jewish students and Jewish people of our district. Furthermore, I was relieved to attend our DLEC meeting, DLEC committee meeting just last week, seeing city leadership and our own, very own Cecilia and Pepe Gonzales facilitating help alleviate some of the anxiety our community is facing with regard to immigration policies and scares. I would like to thank Captain Leon from the San Rafael Police Department for talking and answering questions and further confidence in our police department's commitment to serve through peace and community support. I was happy to see multiple community liaisons in this meeting and want to congratulate them for their commitment that they and recognize that they are at the front line of answering questions, settling concerns, and responding and putting at ease concerned parents. As an individual trustee, I've been working to understand the Oak Hill Project and the intricacies of it. I'm excited for the conclusion of this school year and hope to be present for many of our students' graduations. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rota. Appreciate it. Trustee Dineva Marsh?
I know it's a long night ahead, and I, when we, I just wanna center, this is not just what happened over the weekend was very tragic, and I think we're all still trying to come to terms with how close-knit our community is. If it's not knowing a family member that was affected, it was a staff member that was affected, neighbors. And I really want to thank our school district leadership for immediately sharing our grief or loss and counseling resources to our neighboring district, because that's what neighbors do, that's what friends do, that's what schools do, that's what community does. And so I just don't wanna say that this statement of condolences and resource sharing is another plus one. This is, I'm really trying to keep it together, and I really wanna thank President Martine for really speaking on behalf of our board, but really, I know we're all hurting as a community, and I think about our students too. So it's important to address mental health, and it's important to address if you need resources and support. So if you need that help, please turn to your local friends, your family, but I'm proud to know that San Rafael City Schools made the call to make sure that we were available to our neighboring school district. The great thing about going third is that trustee Rota and trustee Lau already covered a lot of the things. So I think this is a milestone moment where my board report will actually be historically short.
Well, thank you.
That brings me a lot of joy. I know, thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
What a gift.
I know, no, it's true. It's true. We have, that's why I wanna acknowledge the night ahead. But the things I wanna add, though, is that with the district reclassification, it's very unusual for a school district to do a district-wide reclassification ceremony. You look at other school districts up and down our state, they celebrate at their local school site level, but we encourage not only school site celebrations, but district-wide. So it was very great to have two hundred and thirty-six hands to shake and a lot of hand sanitizer afterwards. Thank you to all. And I also wanna uplift the Mariachi Band. That was from one of our own in San Rafael City Schools. I am sorry, I forgot the name of the band. I wanna uplift them. But I think that's really great that they communicate together the celebration of our families. On March thirty-seven, attended the city-county schools meeting that's in partnership with Miller Creek School District, our school district, the County of Marin, and the city of San Rafael. I know I keep mentioning these, but these committee meetings are really a bridge of bi-directional communication and uplifting topics that are of need and of importance. And the biggest thing is about what's happening with our immigration families. So that's the one thing I wanted to highlight. The Madrona Project-Based Learning Showcase on April four was amazing. And what I loved about it is that it was easy to understand and such a complex. And what I loved about it is that it was easy to understand for such a complex issue about food justice work. And on top of that, bilingual presentations. And so I really want to thank the students for their amazing projects. And, but also the families and friends who showed up to support and celebrate them and the staff at Madrona because it was quite the celebration. And looking forward to next year. In, in that same spirit of celebration, I want to say a plug that the Golden Bell Ceremony is happening next month, May twenty third, I sit on the Golden Bell Committee. It's an opportunity to celebrate staff and our programs and community partners. But I really want to say to our neighboring school district, Miller Creek School District, congratulations to their president, Brad Hansberger, on being noted as trustee of the year. And I think it's really key because he's also president of our Marin County School Board Association. And his work in partnership with Centerfels City Schools across our seventeen school districts has not gone unnoticed. And so I just want to say congratulations from a neighboring partner. Tomorrow is this SRCS School Culture Equity and Belonging Committee meeting, looking forward to that and attending and promotion of the two things. Thank you in advance for attending the Heads Up Carnival this Saturday at San Rafael High School. We are so thankful your support of purchasing raffle tickets. And if you don't know where you can purchase raffle tickets, please follow the San Rafael Heads Up Foundation Instagram account. Or you can go to President Martin during our break or after the meeting. That is a selfless plug, but in all honesty, thank you, thank you, thank you to our community partners, our sponsors. And even if you can't show up this Saturday like myself, I'm so sorry about that, but I will buy tickets. I think there's different ways for us to support this really worthwhile cause. So excited for the homecoming back to San Rafael High. And finally, trustee Rotus had mentioned it, that same day is going to be the Inclusion Fair and I'm, and it's here at Terralinda, well, not here. Here at Terralinda High School, but I just want to note that it's hosted by the Marin County Youth Commission and that there are many San Rafael high, sorry, city school students who participate as representatives of the Marin County Youth Commission. The Marin County Youth Commission is the oldest youth commission in the country that serves as an advisory board to the Marin County Board of Supervisors. So by attending the cultural fair and attending Heads Up Foundation on April twenty sixth, you're feeding two birds with one seed and supporting our students and families. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Daniela Marsh. All right, trustee Kerner.
All right, I had a, a few calls over the last few weeks for an important upcoming discussion we're having later today about the Oak Hills Housing Project. So got some very good insights on that. Also excited that tomorrow I will be going to an art exhibit at San Pedro, which I was invited to. So I'll be doing that in the morning. And then also for the upcoming graduation ceremonies that are coming up, I'll be going to Terralinda. Also, I want to thank the board for everything that you do and absolutely for stepping up, especially when there were elections when no one else would step up. Dr. Lau, I appreciate you coming in to offer taking up this through an appointment and also the board for accepting an appointment process to actually have Dr. Lau and someone else come in where we would try to make a decision. Although we did make a decision, the other process is go to a special election, which sometimes might have to happen. But all of you who step in and do this, thank you so much. I don't quite understand some of the comments that come up that maybe are pointing out some kind of special interest, but I don't think that's constructive. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kerner, and I appreciate your comments very much. Okay, so for me, I, I don't, I echo, we've talked about the tragedy. I do want to remind people that there are a few GoFundMe pages for these dear families and please look at them and think about that and, and just consider them. I did attend the Bay Area Discovery Museum and I don't know if you know, but we partner with a discovery museum. And we talked about the importance of learning, the case for playing and playing is learning. And so I just, you know, if anybody wants to see this packet, it was very amazing to attend that with other elected officials. Also, I also have received a lot of calls and conversations around the Oak Hill Project. And I will be excited for that conversation later and, and I'm very thankful that our board is very committed to housing and, and I look for that discussion later. Also, I think I thanked all the teachers for parent conference. I want to thank you for all the hard work that goes into that. I don't know if I did it before spring break. I also hope that all of our teachers are, all of anyone that touches our schools had a great break and got some relaxation. Also, the Davidson tour just this Friday, my family is so excited about Davidson next year, cannot wait. I also wanted to say that the reclassification, we've talked about it, but I want to thank the people behind the scenes. Cecilia, the team, everyone that put that together. I don't know everyone, but thank you for your hard work. It is such a special moment for these families and you and the team make it magical. So thank you for that. And I just don't want to forget the hard work that goes into it. So. And you know what? I wanted to say also, I'm excited about graduation and congratulations, Laurel Dell is just going to be thriving with you and I appreciate our conversation about the importance of general education and special education. And thank you for that productive conversation. And I also want to say that I am very proud that I will be hitting my fourth year next year on my full term. And I have not gone off the board. So thank you for pointing out the importance of our full term as board members. And I'm excited for my last year and we'll see what happens after that. But I admitted to my fourth year, thank you for reminding me. Also, I just want to thank all of the individuals that have really wrapped their arms around these families and I just hope, you know, you really hug your families so much stronger. And I know we always do, but I am just, I, I just am really, as you saw earlier today, I'm just really at a moment of pause. But anyway, so thank you for that. And now on to our superintendent.
So on that note, over the weekend, we have an emergency text message chain with all the superintendents in Marin County. And Tara texted us and let us know what happened. And within hours, sixty six and counting personnel from Miller Creek, Kentville, Nevada, San Rafael, any, the districts, all the districts in Marin County signed up to provide counseling services and support, not only to the Tam School District, but to the surrounding elementary schools as well. And the list is growing. So I want to thank Lisa Miller for her leadership in that respect. Hearts and minds and love go out to the Tam School District and their families. As a parent and a grandparent, something that you never want to endure. So my thoughts are with them. But very proud of the response that our county provided to, to the school district. Additionally, want to welcome Katie. Very excited to have you on board. Looking forward to this is fantastic things for Laurel Dell and for you. And then went to Coleman last week. Glad to see Mr. Peck is here to do his presentation. It was an amazing visit. Saw so much diversity and so much just collaboration and teaching and joy. So it was really, I sat in on their leadership, student leadership meeting. I thought I was sitting in a cabinet meeting. Okay, well, I got that. I got this. It was just amazing. So, you know, it's to meet Alex and the teachers. It's just amazing. And then I look forward to seeing everyone at Carnival this Saturday. It's going to be, so that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. And with that, I think we will now, we have no students today and so we will now go into presentations. And I believe we have Kristy first with a AI spotlight. And thank you tonight for supporting us this evening.
Okay, so let me just get this going here on my end.
Do you need someone to drive while you are presenting?
Standing over here. I'll stand here and then I'll. So again, so great to see you. I hope you all had a wonderful spring break. My name is Kristi Nowak, Director of Technology. And I came to you in January and talked to you a little bit about the AI Task Force. So I'm here tonight to give you a little bit of an update on that, but there was also a request on, hey, is there a way that we can share some perspectives from the field? So tonight I do have two presenters. I have Ben Smolowitz and I have Kendra Rose from Terralinda and they're going to be joining me in sharing some experiences. So you as a board have an understanding about how AI tools can be used, how they've been used and their thoughts and perspectives on that for you. So just a quick update on the task force. So first off, these were the objectives that we have been working on that I talked to you about in January. We've had three sessions. I think they've gone very well. They've been building vacation conversation activities to help bring together perspectives from staff, from students, from administrators. So we're having those different conversations as well. We are actually have an initial draft and this Wednesday we have our fourth session. So we are going to be focusing on so a little bit more conversation, but really starting to look at that draft. And the goal would be to give, to present that guidance to you before by June sixteenth, which is the last last meeting for the year. And with that, also some recommendations. I just wanted to call out in session two, we did a student perspectives panel and it was really great. We had three eleventh graders, one ninth grader and one seventh grader. So I'm really happy to see that spread of different grade levels sharing their perspectives. And during these sessions, we've had, you know, ebb and flow of students that are able to participate. But again, I'm really happy with the folks that have been helping with that. And again, you'll hear from a student tonight and I think that will be powerful. All right, with that said, can I have you two come on up? And I'm just going to stand over here and, thanks. And you just tell me when I'm, I'm going to go first.
Thank you all for allowing me to come to speak to you today. My name is Ben Smolowicz and I'm a junior at Terralinda High School as well as the Jewish Student Union President. So I appreciate your recognition as well. I'm currently enrolled in three AP classes and involved in several extracurricular activities, which as you might imagine, means I have a pretty full schedule. This is exactly why I found AI to be such a valuable learning tool. Between my coursework and extracurriculars, I need tools that can help me manage my time, stay on top of my studies and learn more efficiently. AI has, has become one of those tools and it's helped me approach my education in a way that's dynamic and more personalized to my needs. As you look to prepare students for their future careers, one of the most important skills you can give them is the ability to use technology efficiently. Specifically, AI is a tool that can enhance education and that's why I believe it should be embraced as a learning resource. At first glance, AI might seem intimidating. There's concern about it being used for cheating or even as something that could replace teachers or make students lazy. But the reality is that AI is already here and it's shaping the lit, the way we live, work and learn. Rather than fearing it, students should, should be shown that they can use it as a powerful tool for their education. I've had personal experience with AI, with how AI can transform the learning process. In my AP Environmental Science class, for instance, I use AI to study for exams. I upload our big ideas, which is a review document we do at the end of each unit to review important concepts and ask AI to create quizzes based on that information. This helps me practice in a more efficient and targeted way than simply reviewing notes. It allows me to focus on areas where I need the most improvement and efficiently prepare for tests. This also allows me to do it in many different formats of quizzes, including answering long essay or multiple choice questions. I've used AI in graphic design class to be more efficient in the planning phase of projects, specifically to check that my ideas seem connected, as well as to assist me in choosing complementary colors as a color blend student. By uploading these technical tasks to AI, I can focus more on the artistic design itself, which is the main focus of my projects. AI didn't do the work for me. It gave me the space to focus on what mattered. I've noticed that AI has helped me become a better learner, providing constructive feedback and streamlining my workflow. Teachers are busy and they often don't have time to give personalized feedback to every student on every assignment. AI can fill that gap, offering support and insights that allow students to learn and improve more, more efficiently. It's not just about getting answers quickly. It's about using AI to reinforce critical thinking and problem solving skills. For example, I spoke with a classmate about her mom's usage of AI in her work as an admin at a local community clinic. She said that seeing adults being able to use AI effectively more than kids these days is kind of backwards. Why aren't we learning to use this powerful tool in school, a tool that would be essential for our future careers? This is exactly the kind of conversation that needs to happen in classrooms, not just with adults, but with students as well. This is where educators can make a meaningful shift. I believe AI should be introduced to students at high school levels, once they build foundational knowledge throughout elementary and middle school. Once we reach high school, we begin taking more specialized courses that require a deeper understanding of more complex topics in a shorter period of time. Especially in AP courses and other college prep classes, AI can help students process information faster, explore topics more deeply and apply what they've learned in real relevant ways. Students should start learning these skills in high school so they can learn how to use AI as a tool for academic success, creativity and future career readiness. AI is not a replacement for teachers and it's not a shortcut for students if it is introduced in the right way. It's a tool, a tool that helps students become better learners, more efficient workers and more prepared for the future. It should be seen as a skill that students must master, just like any other subject or technology. Teachers should be teaching students how to use AI effectively, and I believe it could be incorporated into curriculum, helping students learn how to use it for studying, research and even creative projects. The future is changing quickly and as educators, it's important not to shy away from new technology. Instead, it is important to prepare students to use AI in meaningful ways, making it a valuable part of their learning experience. Let's empower students to unlock the potential of AI, giving them the tools they need to succeed in an ever-changing world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
I'm Kendra Rose. I'm the teacher librarian at Terralinda. I was an English teacher here for fourteen years and this is my fourth year in this role, which I love because it gives me the opportunity to work with teachers in all different departments, really focusing on particularly research, media literacy and digital literacy. So I have spent a lot of time this year working with teachers on AI, both in terms of how teachers can utilize it to streamline their work, especially administrative tasks that take up a lot of our day. But also working with teachers to pilot a couple of student-facing platforms that I think are really exciting. So I thought I would share with you guys a couple of examples. Teachers are using it for themselves, you know, professionally, but also how they're using it with students. So if you want to go forward, this is a couple of tools. In addition to ChatGPT, which a lot of teachers use that, you know, for stuff like formatting emails or changing the tone, parent communication, letters of recommendation, that kind of stuff. This is something that comes, is available to us, to all teachers now in Centerfels City Schools through Khan Academy, which I know a lot of people have experience with and students use a lot. But these are their teacher tools. And so we're, as ChatGPT sort of, you know, pulls from everything, this is much more focused in, on an educational context. It knows that everything it's creating is for teachers or for students. And this is also integrated now into Canvas, which is the learning management system that we use at the high schools. So teachers don't have to navigate between different tabs even. It's all in one place. So you can be uploading an assignment to your Canvas course and say, oh, I need a couple of multiple choice questions for this quiz. Click on the multiple choice quiz generator, put in your standards or your lesson plan and it will generate those for you in seconds. And it's really much, I think, a little bit more accurate, especially when it comes to the state standards, right? Because it, it's trained more on educational materials. You can do lesson plans, exit tickets. There's an IEP assistant, which is really helpful for our special education teachers. On the next slide, I'll show you an example of something that I used just the other day with a teacher. This was a teacher who teaches Sadi econ. So she has English learners. A lot of them are in eleventh and twelfth grade. So they're learning really high level content. They're talking about incentives and economics, which I don't, I mean, I don't know that much about it myself. I'm not an econ teacher, but her students are, a lot of them are newcomers or beginning English speakers. So you've got this complex topic and you've got students who can't access complex vocabulary. So she wanted to do an activity that would get them interested in this topic, get them sort of hooked. So this is all I put in. Like you don't, the, another thing about this tool is you don't have to prompt it very carefully. You can just kind of like give it what you have and it generates really good quality stuff. So we put in the grade level incentives and economics. We want to introduce them to, you know, some of these examples, cultural norms, financial rewards. And on the next slide, you'll see what it gave us. It gave us three options. All very different in what you're having students do. One is a discussion kind of philosophical question. One is a hands-on activity. And one is a case study of a real world company that has actually used incentives in a way to build their business. She ended up using option number two because this was a Sadi class. And again, the language levels really vary. Now, option two was a hands-on activity where students got fake money and they had to go around the classroom and decide what they were going to buy based, different products, based on different incentives and then talk about what made them make those choices. So again, this is, I could not have, I mean, I was working with this teacher as a coach and I could not have come up with this idea on my own. I do not teach economics. So it was a really powerful tool and it ended up being a great activity. Um this is an example, not of Khan Migo, but of a platform called Diffit and it is a text leveller. Um this has also been incredibly powerful for our ELL teachers, our Sadi teachers, our special education teachers, um because you can take an existing text, you can take a New York Times article, plug it in and say, I want this to be at a second grade reading level. So again, you're taking like really high-level material, but you're you putting it into a sentence structure and using vocabulary that's accessible to a new English learner. It highlights academic vocabulary for you, it generates reading check questions, it generates um a longer essay questions, um it gives you sentence frames, right, to help them answer those questions. This has been game-changing for our EL classes cause a lot of the curriculum that exists is just too advanced for someone who is brand-new to speaking English. So this has allowed our teachers to really get into sophisticated topics um with appropriate materials. Um so we also have been just dipping our toe into using AI with students in the classroom. They don't have access to ChatGPT, um right, or those kinds of things on campus. Um but we have been using a couple of things on the next slide as an example. This was an assignment where students uh were looking at a local politician who was running in the most recent election. They had to do a little research, they read the the candidate's bio, what their platform is, what they stood for. And then the students came up with campaign slogans in small groups. But then they went to Canva, which I don't know if you guys have ever used that to make, you know, your infographics. Um they went to Canva and used that AI tool um to come up with campaign slogans. And then they compared, what did AI come up with and what did they come up with? So this was like a little mendocognitive in that they were using AI and also talking about, was it useful? Is it better than the human-generated stuff that we did? What are the advantages and disadvantages of using a tool like this? Um and then they took those campaign slogans and used the image uh creator function on Canva to create campaign posters. Um what I have been working on recently that I think is really exciting is something called um the Khan Migo Writing Coach. So this is also through Khan Academy, um but this again is student-facing and they get to interact with an AI kind of counter while they go through the writing process. And it's kind of difficult to explain, I have a two-minute video that is really nice cause it gives you, I think, a really good idea of what it looks like from the student perspective and the teacher perspective. Do you wanna?
Khan Academy is excited to share our latest tool for writing instruction, Khan Migo Writing Coach. Designed by teachers to emphasize the writing process as much as the writing product, Writing Coach is an AI-enabled instructional tool with the purpose of producing better writers. Let's take a look at how it works. To get started, students can either fill in the assignment details themselves or click Begin Assignment for an essay assigned by their teacher. The first stage of the Writing Coach experience is understanding the assignment. Here Khan Migo helps the student break down the essay prompt and instructions, answers questions about key terms and supports the student in developing a plan to get started. Next, students complete their outline. The outline structure is flexible to accommodate different essay types and formats and Khan Migo is there to guide the student as they organize their ideas. Before students move on to drafting, Khan Migo will also check their work to make sure the student's outline is aligned to the assignments. When it's time to begin drafting, students have easy access to their outline. They can copy and paste ideas directly into their draft. If they get stuck or wanna make sure they're on the right track, Khan Migo is there to give them guidance without doing their work for them. Like all Khan Migo student experiences, chats and other Writing Coach interactions are captured for teacher review and insights. So teachers will be notified of any interactions that may indicate plagiarism. When it's time to move on to revising, Khan Migo will check again to ensure that the student's first draft is ready for feedback. Khan Migo then generates specific, actionable, grid-level, appropriate feedback in areas like claim and introduction, essay structure and organization, how well arguments are supported and even the style and tone. Students can view the feedback, ask for clarifications or examples, make revisions and then request more reviews. When students are done revising, they can export their final draft to Google Drive or save it as a PDF or work document to be shared in their LMS. While students are working, teachers can view a class assignment report with visibility into each student's writing process, summaries of class and student-level feedback, reports on time spent at each stage of writing and chat exchanges with Khan Migo. Teachers can also review any feedback provided by Khan Migo throughout the writing process. Teachers can also see originality flags and zoom in on an individual student's full chat, outlining, drafting and revising processes for deeper insights into where students may have struggled or excelled. To learn more about how to get access to Khan Migo or bring it to your school or district, Khan Academy is excited to.
Alright, so this was really, I worked on a project with a stu- a teacher and we did this for a research project for four weeks. And it was really fascinating to watch students interact um and to see how they asked the the AI questions. Um the teacher feedback was really overwhelmingly positive. Um I think Ben mentioned, you know, at the high school level, you've got a hundred and fifty students maybe. You cannot give everybody individualized feedback on every piece of writing. It's something that I always really struggled with cause to actually improve a student's writing style, not just structure and organization, but like how your writing sounds, really requires one-on-one work. And this is a great way for teachers to sup- like students to get the support, that individualized support that they need. Um and it's it's, you know, available to everyone. Um they really liked that they could monitor students' progress, you can see their chats. Um so you can pull up examples of students who are using it well and kind of compare that to the students who are like, you know, what do I do? Can you do this for me? You know, like it's it doesn't do that, it's not gonna answer their questions directly. Students actually really didn't like that, they just wanted it to answer their questions. Teachers really liked that feature in that it prompts them with more questions and tries to get them to think, to get to the answer on their own. Um the student feedback was also really positive uh over mostly. They liked that they could get answers without having to wait for their teacher, you know, with their hand up. They liked the individualized feedback. The revision piece of this is really excellent. The the it doesn't give you a lot of help, it gives you some help. But once you have a completed draft and you ask for revision, the revisions are very specific, they're very individualized. They're, it's exactly the kind of feedback I would give a student on their first draft. Um and students really liked that as well. Um I think most importantly, and I'll wrap this up, on the last slide, we did a student survey at the end and well over half, sixty-six percent, said that their essay was either slightly better or much better than it would have been without Khan Migo. Um and I think that's pretty good for a student survey to get that kind of positive feedback. Um but what's more important, not more important, but equally as important is that the teacher feedback was that overall across the board, these essays were better than any previous essays that the class had written. And that's across levels, so the lowest, you know, skilled writer improved, as did the highest skilled writers, their writing also improved. Um so I think this is really exciting and it's something that we're just kind of starting to experiment with and we wanna do more. Um you know, with tools like this, where students get to use AI in a controlled and safe environment. And then we can start teaching some of them some of these AI literacy skills. Um we are doing uh highlights at our staff meetings every month on a new AI tool. And every um Monday at lunch, Kristy came today, I do a drop-in lunch and learn for teachers who want to try AI or have questions about it, um or who just wanna talk about, you know, the philosophical ramifications of adopting these things in our classroom, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um I'm just gonna wrap this up really quickly with some next step to get, thank you so much. I hope that was insightful and that really gives you some um some really powerful information really from the field. I just also want to acknowledge that um San Francisco High School is also doing um some experimenting with um Canva and with Khan Migo with their added classes. And so again, just so uh just to kind of call that out as well. Um so next steps, when we talk about that, again, um we're, you know, uh currently, I'm working with um the elementary and high school um, you know, districts, um there was in the surveys, all the staff uh get interest about what um professional development they want. And so I was able to include that. And so we'll see how those surveys come out in the elementary and secondary um school districts. And as I stated, um our goal is of course to by June sixteenth, have that guidance uh document for you, um highlights and then recommendations of next steps. Um just wanted to share, I skipped the candor, uh collaboration and challenges, of course. This is very much site collaboration, right, with educational services, with different folks, um understanding the landscape. You know, the reality is, we have a lot of initiatives, right? There's a lot of things happening in our district. And so just this idea of how do we continue to have those conversations of what avenues for education for staff and thus for students, right? The beginning of this experimenting, you know, shows when we haven't really even introduced that very much in a professional development manner. So again, we're kind of doing the grassroots, which I think is great. Um so that's just another kind of thing to consider. Um and then also examining what the Wednesday schedule, which is already a little tight. Um and then just again, how do we continue to support equitable learning across all of our schools to expose all of our students at least to those fundamentals? Right, any questions at this time?
Um trustee, any questions or comments?
Uh I have a couple of questions.
Thank you, trustee, you were there.
My first question is, how are teachers facilitating these lessons made by AI? Are they, you know, consecutively looking back at their screen and, you know, what the AI told them to teach that class or how is, how does that look?
So basically, right now, most uh teachers are dipping, if they're dipping their toes, it's for productivity and efficiency. And so what the messaging and some of the uh education that has been either through conversations with myself or at the site level is the concept of you cannot always just assume what is on there is correct, right? Of course, safety was my first conversation. Um but then going back and looking, what is this compared to you as the professional, right? And where are you seeing the value of it? And in some cases, it can be valuable and in some cases, it is not valuable. I mean, I have personally experienced times where I'm like using it and I'm like, you know what? It is just better if I am doing this myself because perhaps I'm not there yet with the prompting or whatever. And so I think that's generally where we're at.
Mm-hmm. And my follow-up question, I understand Khan Migo, it seems like a pretty good thing and I understand its initiative and trying to help every single student and having an individual tutor. But how 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 is the teacher gonna, you know, still get a grasp of what plagiarism is going on? Cause it sounded like when they use Khan Migo, they have to constantly be monitoring the prompts that they ask Khan Migo and also the response it gives them and, you know, how are they gonna manage that? If a hundred fifty students are are doing this and they're constantly checking for plagiarism.
Can I an- can I answer that?
Sure.
Cause just cause I I saw what happens if a student does plagiarize, if it cut, um it sends the, it not only creates a red flag in the the kind of list of students, it sends the teacher an email too. So we got emails when a student uses inappropriate language, for example, um immediately. And it said, you know, you needed to talk to the student about, you know, using appropriate language and also with plagiarism. I will also say the teacher who was piloting this also was using, um she's also part of a pilot for uh, I don't know what the name, that software that it's. Classroom management tool where she can see what they're looking at on their Chromebooks. You know, she can see all the student screens. Um and she can limit this the websites that they're allowed to go to in that class period. That was really essential to being able to use Khan Migo effectively is that the the management of the Chromebooks and, you know, going to distracting websites or copying and pasting from other websites. She could actually control that with um this other uh tool that she was using. So the the connection, uh using those at the same time, um was honestly, I think, essential. I think it would have been much harder if she didn't have that tool.
Yeah, just my concern is that capacity is changing from the teacher helping the student to managing all these screens and all these inputs.
Yeah, and I think that's, again, we're in that experimenting and this is, again, we're at the beginning of our journey. And so that's why the conversation about how do we have effective training and understanding and what that looks like, I think, is meaningful in order to ensure that all our staff have an understanding of the appropriate time. It's not an all-the-time, right? It's it can be at different times. And so these are those conversations that we can have for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee, you wrote us.
But is this used in the classroom or they they weren't using this at home, were they?
They weren't using it at home, it was in the classroom, yeah.
It's in the classroom, cause they're gonna say otherwise, they'd open another chatbot. Paste it in, like ask that question to paste it in.
Yes, but we also have TurnItIn and we have other kind of um, you know, software that runs their essays when they turn in their final draft. And there's a lot of things that that we're using to try to prevent that. Um teachers also are pretty good at telling what a student wrote and what they didn't. Like, you know, they they're writing a lot in class as well, so we know what they're writing sounds like. And 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 it's it's when, it's easy to catch, not so easy to prove with AI. It's not the same as copying and pasting from Google where you can find a website where they got it. Um but there are a lot of safeguards that we're trying out. Um and I I think that's just using it with students and talking about it with students and showing them the difference between, like Ben said, the difference between using it as a tool and uh, you know, just copying and pasting work is kind of essential, like they need to learn that. And so us acknowledging it is an important piece of that, you know? And if we're just saying it's a cheating tool, don't use it.
For sure.
You know, that's that, then that's the the only way that they'll ever use it.
Yeah, the reality, yeah, the reality is, is we just need to be transparent, right? We just need to be transparent and have an open communication between student and teacher. And I think that is really the most effective way for everybody to be on the same page.
Yeah.
Something else?
Yeah, I wanna, is in for what Ben was talking about, which which is great, like the study guide and all. But I, Ben is, he's in it, he knows it, he's, he uses it.
He's committed.
He's committed, it's awesome. And some some kids do, some kids don't, maybe have that same range. Is there a place, cause I think of like when you worked at a company, like I realized this when I worked at home, like suddenly, like I wasn't around a bunch of people and you pick up all of these tools that you wouldn't know about and and knowledge just by being around people.
Yes.
Is there a class or an environment where Ben and and fifteen other Bens are working together or and other other students are coming in and learning from their expertise and just playing with and experimenting with the tools in like a study hall?
Yeah, I was thinking of AI study hall.
Well, the idea, right, like what is this idea of, you know, how, again, that's that broader conversation of how are we actively, you know, spreading this? What is the, you know, clubs, what is the idea of, you know, establishing or knowing your um, necessarily maybe your tech leaders, your student tech leaders, right? Um what does that look like as far as digital literacy in general? I was just thinking the other day about, wow, what if we had, you know, something like with student body, you know, representing this idea of digital wellness um and how that can look. But also conversely, what is the importance and role of technology in your lives as you leave high school? Not only for career, but just for life, right? Do you have the fundamentals to help you succeed as best you can, no matter what path you have chosen? And just exposing them, so those are the conversations of what we're hoping to look forward.
Yeah, and it's it seems like in that case, like I almost see an environment where you, I'll stop after this, but you could give a group of students a problem that they can't solve, it's way above their level. Like they don't know any of this now. But because you have all the access to these tools, they can all start asking questions to figure this thing out and figure it out together. Because that's what's so cool about it, it's like I can go back to old concepts that I've even forgotten and pick them back up because you have the tools. Thing like environments that will put them in that challenging spot will probably make them reach out and find new tools and new things. It's a little bit more wild in terms of convenient, like this is a place, you're saying, I I don't put any reins on it. Like go go into the wild and grab all these tools, but there may be a place where that could just bubble up a lot of new ideas um in terms of what they could use.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I and I know that you know, we are very uh, we're very interested in this, uh Mark and I, and so is the board. But I wanted to actually speak to Ben, I think what you shared is amazing. I mean, my my daughters are fifth graders and um they wanted chickens, so they had to do a PowerPoint. And then they uploaded their PowerPoint to um to check it in AI and it highlighted the gaps of what they missed, which was like, what are chickens, what is the poisonous thing for chickens, you know? But I love that framing of like exploration in your brain, so I just am very excited. I just, I with Mark, like how do we get more kids to even know about it? Because um I think Ben, you said this helps students unlock their potential. I forgot what your quote was, but it was amazing because there's also a quote that AI is an equity game changer. And I think the minute we can stop coming from a place of fear and coming from a place of, if you're not a part of the AI conversation, you're already outdated. But we need to be in this journey and um and in partnership with our teachers and our unions and our parents and everyone, so everyone feels safe. But um I'm just like really excited about keeping to unlock this potential for our students and our teachers. So um any other comments from the board before we just?
No, no comments. I uh Sam Almond wrote an article, it's called Planning for AGI and Beyond, and his uh his 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 message is that AI is gonna help humanity maximally flourish, uh flourish, so to Ben's point.
Well, I I learned a lot from your band today, uh tonight about what AI can do. I think you you said it very well. AI is um is a, is a, it could be a way to, uh tools that that can help uh you to be more effective. And I'm really impressed about what you can use it with for test preparations and generating ideas, um as well as get some personalized feedback. I I'm looking forward to, you know, maybe in the future, there's a box that we can upload, the board agenda items and that can help. And then it can help me better prepare the board. You know, so that will be, that will be great.
Joseph was talking about that.
He must have heard.
So the, the one thing I, I wanted to ask is, um, I don't know if there's any enough literature study out there. I know we, we always talk about achievement gaps, right? Um, and we know that achievement gaps, you know, they do exist, you know, such as like the A, A four G uh, competitions, AP achievement, um, I don't know if the AI tools will help us, how can benefit us from closing that achievement gap? Or, or could be due the opposite? So I'm just ho- hoping that we can kind of learn more about it and how that actually can help us with closing the achievement gap and providing more equitable uh, learning opportunity for our students.
Absolutely, and if you'd like any white papers or case studies, I've got plenty.
I just have one brief comment, cause I know we're behind and I know I'm so excited about the next presentation with our students um, and staff. Um, you said it best, uh, trustee Martin, that AI and this work is an equity game changer. And I think back to last year at the Madrone um, showcase, how AI was the topic at hand. And I had mentioned earlier in my board report, like, you know, what I love about the Madrone showcase is that it was accessible and complicated topics, but for a community audience, especially a bilingual audience. And so in the same spirit of equity game changer, I look forward to the completion of um, the report and the findings. But also how are we gonna communicate, especially to our families where English is not the first language? There might be some concerns about AI and privacy and how that might affect students in a way that is the same, um, you know, and when I say language, I mean the same definitions of like, we're committed to the learning and the students, but this is how it's going to change the, this work. And really what type of roadshow or communications in community with our students, parents, um, et cetera. Very similarly, I loved how we heard actual examples from our staff and our students. I would love to see it again, um, when we do the larger roadshow after the completion of this uh, task force.
Yes, absolutely. And there's already been conversations, of course, for programming for twenty five, twenty six years. So we're already talking about parent outreach in jet, in different areas. Uh, this is wonderful.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thanks for that wonderful presentation. I do wanna say before we go to the next, yes, can people that, I see that people have joined us. If you do have a comment, make sure you, you know, talk to people, fill this out and bring it forward, please, thank you. Okay, next we have Coleman with Mr. Alex Pack. And I believe he's got some superstars that are joining him, so please join us, thank you for being here with us this evening.
Uh, I will do it. Thank you.
Technology. She's like, I know what's up.
I know, what's going on?
Well, thank you for having me tonight, President Martin, um, trustees. I was actually trustee Rodes's um, AP assistant principal, um, uh, in twenty nineteen, so it's great to see you. Um, and thank you, um, Superintendent Gessels. So I'm gonna get us started, um, I am Alex, you can go next slide please. I'm Alex Pack.
Way to go now.
So, and you know, I was playing around a little bit with AI myself.
Way to jump on that trend.
Well, I, for Sater the other night, I was like, oh, can you take Kendrick Lamar's, um, alright? And put it in and rewrite the story of Exodus through that? And had some fun with that for the Sater. My wife.
Coming next.
So um, as you can see, uh, from that last picture, I um, love sneakers. I, um, Air Max ninety OG, my favorite. Do you wanna go back to the? Uh, I'm a big surfer as well. Um, I used to surf daily, but now I'm more of a weekend warrior. And then uh, I love music, so my first album ever was Wu Tang Clan Thirty Six Chambers.
I mean.
It's a classic.
Classic, yeah.
Um, I grew up in Richmond, California and uh, went to high school in Albany as well. And what led me into education is seeing the outcomes for my friends growing up in the same areas as me. Um, they, you know, they didn't have a parent necessarily that knew how to navigate the system. Uh, my mom was an educator in Richmond and um, she was able to keep pushing me forward and asked to transfer to different schools based upon, um, you know, which schools were higher performing. And when I thought, um, when I was leaving college and um, I was thinking about my next steps, well, I started to volunteer in schools, um, and I realized that, you know, a zip code should not determine the outcomes for you educationally or for your life. Um, so I wholeheartedly believe in, uh, you know, teaching the whole child within our community. And that, um, if we provide the opportunities for our students, they will achieve. Um, and you know, working within our community and within our families to make that happen. So, um, just quickly, I've been in SRCS since year nine for me. I was at San Pedro for three years, where I taught fifth grade. Um, I was at Santa Fel High School for three years, one of, two of which were as assistant principal and one as interim principal. Um, and then I, you know, six more years of education, um, teaching in Richmond. So I, yeah, thank you. So Coleman, we have an amazing staff. Um, I'd say this is one of the things that set aside our school from, from other sites. Uh, we have twenty four certificated staff, um, and we have thirteen classified staff. And our school continues to grow back to our, our pre-COVID numbers. It's lovely to see families come to Coleman. Um, we currently have eighteen classrooms, one of which is at the Early Learning Center. And I'm really excited that, um, our classrooms coming home. Uh, Tim Ryan's been doing a fabulous job with his team. And we have three new uh, buildings coming to Coleman that will be ready in May that are looking amazing. Um, and it actually, the architecture behind it looks identical to the rest of the buildings with all the bells and whistles though. And a functional HVAC system. So we're excited, um. Go to the next slide please. So when I was at Santa Fel High School, what I come to find uh, right away is that you could tell who the Coleman kids were. And the reason why I share that is those students can navigate um, any um, different social group. Uh, they did it well and they were successful academically. Uh, and when you come to Coleman, you'll actually be quite struck that our student body reflects Santa Fel. Um, and what we see within that, um, which is not always common, is a ton of joy within our students interacting with one another and hanging out. Um, so it is one of those things that makes Coleman really special is, you know, it's really our student body. So I, I'm just really proud to um, have that opportunity to work alongside our, our educators and our students. Our numbers stay the same, or the percentage wise, um, as far as our students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, um, homeless, you know, fluctuates within ten or so. Um, and then you can see the rest of our student body, uh, being, you know, largest percentage of that is our Hispanic Latino uh, community and then our, our white community as well. Um, but we also have a smattering of others. So we have um, nineteen who are two or more races. We have um, Asian, Black, American Indian, Filipino students as well. Next slide please. And one of the things we started to do in the last three years, which I really feel as though has led to um, this sense of belonging um, for our student body and our families are the cultural events. Uh, we have held Hispanic Heritage, uh, we have held Black History Month and um, we've held pride celebrations as well. Uh, this year we are going to celebrate a Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander for the first time. And I'm just really thrilled about all the planning that's happened within that. And our parent groups who come to plan for those, you um, hear from them constantly, um, within those different groups of feeling like they have a place at our school. Now, one of the, the most, um, one of the best parts of Coleman is that, um, that community connection we have with our families. Our parent teacher organization, um, does a phenomenal job of fundraising for all of our students. Um, and when they were allocating funds, um, this last school year and for twenty five, twenty six, one of the things they want is equitable outcomes for all of our students. So they funded point four, um, FTE, um, which is around two days worth, um, uh, um, two days worth of employment for our school intervention teacher. Now, we're really lucky where the district office was able to fund um, point five FTE of that. And then we took on the rest as a school site through our title dollars. But I bring that up because our parents understand who we are as a community and really believe in that. Uh, the other things they fund are field trips, garden science for TK through first. Um, we have a garden science teacher, uh, youth and arts in Richmond in partnership with SRCS and heads up. So another plug for coming out Saturday to, uh, you know, go ahead and support our music, dance and arts programming. Uh, Superintendent Gessels talked about our student leadership. We actually have uh, four different, or really three different leadership groups. The fourth is kind of a, a mix of them all. So um, our student council, um, is a great way for our students to get involved. So every Wednesday, they, um, you know, they open, they do mindfulness moment, they talk about things happening on campus. Um, whether that be positive behaviors or um, recently we've started Rainbow Positives. And so within Rainbow Positives, it is our um, second step lessons, our social emotional learning lessons, key vocabularies every week. So one way that we can have some more language and teachers are highlighting something that the student has done. So the students are welcomed and celebrated. In a little bit, I'm really excited, we're gonna have our zero waste and green team, um, Guru come on up. She is phenomenal and um, has reduced our waste quite a bit. So I'm excited to hear what she has to share about that. And we uh, went from bronze this last year and we're shooting for silver gold. We'll see if we make it. So, so clarity, what's our work at Coleman? Um, I, you know, our, our first goal is around student success. And when I think about our six goals, I really think all these are interconnected. So I, I do wanna build a little bit of a timeline for you all to, as I go through this, I will talk through it. Um, for where we were three years ago, how we've gotten to where we are today. Um, so essentially, you know, this goal is focused on our multilingual learners and our students in special education or receiving special education su- uh, services. Um, and we really honed in on English language arts. So, um, the actions taken to make progress on the six goals is really number one is systematize our multi-tiered system of support. Um, coordination of service team, our professional learning community team, uh, grade level standards, smart goals go with that. Revision of the master schedule. And then also what's not on there is intervention and counseling is tightly interwoven with all, with our multi-tiers of systems to support. Again, this is a whole child that we're thinking about. Uh, within our coordination of service team, um, you'll see that the culture, um, climate behavior supports, um, as well as PD for PLC. So coming out of COVID, our students were definitely, you know, they had different experiences. So you can imagine, um, the most impactful years in your first five, you're not out playing with your friends. And so where we were heavily impacted at first was around social emotional learning and behaviors. So students were just learning how to um, be social with one another. And until we were able to work on that, um, we weren't able to get to the learning. Now, students did learn, they continued to grow, but that was a big focus of ours. Um, year two, we did a deeper dive into our professional learning communities. So how do we get folks, you know, our, my goal was to get folks trained in year one and year two? How do we look at data, um, to create plans that are really specific? Um, you've probably heard a lot about tier one, tier two and tier three instruction. So tier one is that of which everyone is going to be guaranteed that receive access to. Tier two is gonna be a little more tailored to um, your different student groups and what they need. And then tier three is, you know, typically your students are multi-years uh, behind. So, um, year two, um, we started to hold weekly cost meetings, but also introduced cycle, um, a cycle of inquiry in cost. So every six weeks, um, we have worked together, um, where we actually bring the teacher in. So what cost was leaving out because it had to happen during the day was the most important, you know, part of the recipe, which is the teacher. So they would give us input, but from that we would try to work as a team, the school, schoolologist, myself, intervention teacher. But we couldn't do the work or hear from teachers and ask questions. So we started to use, um, uh, roving subs that would help within that, cover the classrooms. Teachers would come and meet with us and we worked with our, uh, a wellness consultant who focused on trauma-informed care. Um, but within that, we started to define, okay, this is behavioral supports, these are academic instructional supports. Um, and so we aligned our six week cycles of reading intervention, uh, with our six week cycles of counseling as well. And so we could see the data to show, um, do we need to move students forward? Do they need another cycle, whether that be through counseling, whether that be through intervention? Um, and that was a huge success and I will talk about that in a little bit. Um, and then year three, we made a big change. We um, revisited our master schedule and we tried to align grade level groups and even grade level, um, band. So we put, we tried to put two, three together. We were really successful with grades four and five. That allowed us to switch students within that, what we did, which has been really successful. We um, use an instructional assistant who she's getting her, uh, uh, teaching credential right now. And she is bilingual, um, we use our intervention teacher, our um, instructional coach. And students also goes to their resource, um, social education for fourth and fifth during that time. So that allows us to have all hands on deck at that time and provide students really targeted um, instruction. Um, and we are seeing the, the huge things growth that can come with that. So next up is our professional learning teams. And what I've screenshot here, it's hard to tell, but we focused, um, we took our scale scores from, um, the LPAC. So our English language assessment, um, proficiency assessment. And we started to look at trends and patterns, okay? Where are our students in those different grade levels? Where are some of their holes? And can we do cycles, um, of inquiry during our PLCs to support them? Whether that's a language, um, being spoken or spoken, excuse me, um, or listening, um, or reading. And so getting really targeted around that over the last two years, we, we saw success and growth in our, um, LP indicator. Um, as well, intervention. You know, we've used the required ION um, system as well. So uh, staff will make a referral through ION, um, we review that. And then the expectation for teachers, when we have that roving sub to talk about, uh, students, individual students, they need to bring uh, data, whether that's behavior charts, um, or in this case, you know, it's uh, reading. And, um, they've done a really great job of bringing that to the table and we started to work on smart goals. So very specific measurable, um, goals, uh, that are focused in our guaranteed standard work. And Sean McQ and our amazing interventionist has done a fabulous job. And so, you know, teachers talked about, and this example was around Kinder. And he, um, asked them to think about who their students were. They gave an idea of where they were landing within our foundational, um, literacy assessment. And then they went back based upon more assessment data that he went and provided. And so he, he's done a tremendous amount of screeners, including the FLA, the, the probes, the foundations assessment for K. And, um, we've started to sort out our groups based upon that. So this round, uh, we are working on a couple of new things. We are doing, um, a short round of intervention for our students who are one year or less, um, below grade level to see if we can get them up to speed in three weeks. And if we can keep moving students forward to hit a, a wider swath of students. But, um, you know, Sean, one of the things that I, I don't think I screened, oh yeah, I screenshot that for you. So. So you'll see there, I will identify five out of five sounds in FLA. He has a rolling Google Doc, which is on the right-hand side that he sends to each teacher. And he gives very detailed feedback every week, which is teachers are taking that. Most are using that for their own SMART goals. So students are getting a double dose of support and intervention. Okay, next slide, please. So within our master schedule, the color coding of the names, so like you'll see the bottom Conway for PE, Chamberlain, et cetera. That was the intentionality behind the master schedule. Next slide, please. Counseling, similarly, when we're talking about those different tiers, we have the universal support. So all of our students will have SEL second step. TK currently is using kimochis. They're receiving classroom guidance lessons. We have school-wide events and community circles. The next layer of that for counseling is group counseling. We call it tiger teams, so positive behave. They are supporting students with positive behaviors on the yard. That's one of our student leadership. And then we have individual counseling, check-in, checkout and behavior plans for students. And that would be in our tier three. Next slide. So what does the data tell us? I'm pleased to share, you know, we've made growth across the band. So if you look in the top in the ELA, you'll see that we are significantly below standard. However, within that, all of our student groups, except for our white students who are in the blue, are making significant growth. They're making growth in the green and the blue bands. Now, we know that that's not enough. We understand that we need to keep working with our students, provide them what they need. But we also like to celebrate those successes and learn from that, most importantly. So within that, you know, some of the things that point out are multilingual learners increased eighteen point one points. Our students with disabilities, fourteen point two points. Our homeless students increased nine point four and our socio-economically twelve point eight points. So really great things happening. And that's really because of the work the teachers are putting in. I feel really lucky to work with such a motivated staff. I will keep us going to the next slide, please. One of the favorite things that we have, my favorite things at Coleman that we have is celebrating our students when they are making growth. So before they had the reclassification ceremony, we bought shirts for all of our students. And it was really sweet. They came on stage and our student council congratulated them. And we talked about that being their superpower that many of us are jealous of. Yeah, so it was a great way to celebrate. But this slide is really important because you'll see that we had significant increases in this indicator. So our students in twenty-two, twenty-three, it was around a little less than twenty-five percent had an increase or maintained at level four of their, their assessment, their LPAC. Now, last school year, we saw over fifty percent. So we doubled that indicator. We're making growth. And so this goes back to that really structured and dedicated time of the scale scores, reviewing those scale scores and having a plan to support our students. Next slide, please. This is just another snapshot of some of the great work happening within intervention, but also in part as our teachers are falling up in that tier two. So with our students, what I did is create a group in iReady. And within that group, I can see those students who are intervention and the growth they've made from the school year. And we started off with students, you know, at the beginning of the school year, twenty-three and thirty-one, who are two or more grade levels below. And that dipped down to nineteen and fourteen. Again, not where we wanted to be, but with SMART goals, we're very specific on a skill. And our students are hitting that skill. They just need a little few more rounds and extra support. And again, you know, you just see the numbers continually to grow. And often if they're early on grade level, they're not going to be in intervention. Next slide, please. So next up is just a snapshot of our local assessment iReady. And the way we can look at this, this is from last school year to this school year. We like to look at the percent met. So you have English learner, progress median, percent met. And the other indicator is those who are meeting their stretch growth. We're not really looking at the median, but we went from thirty-three percent to forty, forty percent from last school year to this school year. And our goal was five percent increase within our iReady in ELA. And we're surpassing that at this point. Next slide, please. And this is just a snapshot of our counseling data. We want to show here that, you know, we just have intentionally selected students from multiple grade levels to get them what they need. And those are typically small groups. And so challenges that we're facing, I think we can all agree to this, it is always time. Our teachers, you know, need extra time for planning. We've attempted to alleviate some of that by providing release days within our SIPSA. So teachers have professional, their professional learning teams come together. We get subs, they can get really struck, they're really detailed on their six-week cycle of what they're going to teach in that tier two. And we're still closing that, that gap from COVID. Our students in fourth and fifth grade, there are some holes in their foundational skills, but we're doing a really phenomenal job of getting very specific to address what they are. And then our next steps. One of the things I really want to hone in on is our alignment between our tier two instruction, our intervention and then special education. So I want our special education goals to be those that are being worked on as well in our tier two instructions. So teachers can give them a double dose as needed and we're working on similar things. And that is something that is currently in the work. So, you know, those are just a few of our next steps. And then thinking about our math adoption, we will be really diving into math this school year. Questions, so.
Oh, thank you so much for that amazing presentation. And I have thoughts, but I would like to ask our trustees, any thoughts or comments that you would like to share with Mr. Peck?
I thought we were going to hear from your green team guru.
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute.
Um, no questions. I'm excited to see the progress that your team has been making. It's, it's very noticeable. I'm like, I'm excited to see those test scores go up. And I'm excited also to see how closely you're monitoring the iReady scores. I think that's very beneficial.
I just, I just appreciate the slide, the chart that you showed and how, you know, if you said it, how intentional and that, you know, and strategic that you're pushing and addressing, spending the time and using the different tools to address those, those gaps. So I hope you continue to make progress and thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Your spirit of inclusion and belonging is very strong in your community. It's really evident in the examples that you shared. I do want to really elevate, like one of the first events I had attended when I became an appointed trustee in October of twenty-twenty-three was one of those cultural events. And it was really exciting to wear my traditional Filipino piñata and really interact with your students. I do want to uplift one of your parent groups, the Coleman Dads. My husband plays for the San Rafael City League. And what's neat is that to help in a space of inclusion and belonging with the parent group, they are fundraising and friend raising. And the Coleman Dads created a men's team and my husband plays in the league. And I share this connection point because community partnerships are so key. Being creative and working in a nonprofit space. And so parents can still find that same sense of belonging and role model that with their student, with their children. And now it's really cool because I was able to hang out with them and really connect on a different type of level. So I just wanted to uplift that there's ways to be, to have connection and creativity, both on campus and in community.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks for building the, the culture there to be so strong. And I, I think we stood out to that, there was a feedback loop, I think you said once a week where they're checking in. And that just makes so much clarity for those involved. And it's opposite of feeling intrusive and like that will really help to know that you're on track and give the right amount of momentum. So yeah, thanks for doing that.
Mr. Peck, wow, thank you so much for such a great presentation. And I, I just want to say I really appreciate how intentional of a leader you are. And you're just such a partner with your teachers and I've got to see it, I've got to see it firsthand. And I will never forget meeting you first when I joined the board and we got to graduation at San Rafael High. But I just really value how I wrote down that you're just very data-driven and like the SMART goals and just showing the transparency of how you lead is just inspiring. And I also just love how you pointed out, I do have fifth graders, as you know, and they are those COVID kids. And I, I, you know, Carmen knows this, that I'm so engaged in math and to see your math scores go up, that is so important. Because as I share with my colleagues, that math is really what tracks our students. And so I just am very thankful for your, all your work you're doing and all your wonderful teachers. And thank you for your great presentation. So thank you so much. Great job. Thank you. That was inspiring. Thank you. All right, and we have green team.
Yep. Yeah, LOD McGibburn, did I say that right?
Yes. Good evening, San Rafael School Board members. My name is Elodie McGibburn and I'm a fifth grader at Coleman. Last year I was voted in as green team guru on our student council. And I wanted to tell you about the big efforts our students have made so far this school year. We had so many students wanting to sign up to be part of our student-led green team that we had to split the two, the groups into two sessions. Many more wanted to join as they saw the great work we had been doing. So we added two more Tiger Club meetings. The challenges we have taken on as a team have had a big impact on our school community. We have had, we have made sure that every student knows how to sort their trash and reduce the amount of waste we send to landfill. In just four months, with the help of Mr. Estuardo, we reduced the number of black sacks we used at lunchtimes from seven to just two. We also have worked on reducing waste in our classrooms and replacing single-use items with reusable and refillable ones. Today, I wanted to ask you to help us with a problem that our students cannot solve by, solve by ourselves, no matter how hard we try. Miss Dolphina serves about two hundred hot lunches every day in addition to breakfast and supper. Every day, those students are given just one option of a plastic spork and to eat their food with. We all know that single-use plastic is really bad for our environment and the, the largest polluter of our oceans. But it gets worse. These single-use spork is offered in a plastic packet with a single-use plastic store and napkin. We, the students, would like to offer an alternative to these plastic items. And we already know that our food service provider is able to switch to a compostable spork. We just need you to approve it. On behalf of all my friends, can you please make this change? During the week of March twenty-fourth to March twenty-eighth, we hosted our very first green week at Coleman. With the help of our zero waste friends, our zero waste friends at Zero Waste Marin, we offered only compostable lunchware and that week as a test. We also committed to refuse plastic straws. And now we have been a straw-free campus since March twenty-fourth. That week alone, we saved eight hundred pieces of single-use plastic from going into the landfill. We now need your help to keep up our momentum. I know that you have a lot of important issues to discuss this evening, but don't let our message be forgotten. Please help our community do the right thing by making important changes to how we serve our students. As the teachers tell us all the time, we can do difficult things, we just have to focus. Thank you for your time. And I also hope we celebrate our stage.
The, oh yeah. My daughters talk about it all the time. All right. Just so let's just be mindful of that. So, okay. So I just want to say I saw some new individuals come into the room. And if you want to speak, you will have to fill out one of these wonderful, have a good night, thanks for having me. Fill out this form, they're right there by the door. And, and so, and I just want to share with everyone, we're about an hour behind on time. So if you do have a public comment, you. Yeah, we are going to lower the time to two minutes. Is that okay? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so wait, hold on just a second. Let me just get organized here. So, all right. So sometimes this can be confusing, but I'm just going to clarify for our new people that are in the room. So we have public comments on non-agendized items. Okay, so items that are not in the agenda, this is when we have that public comment. So I will be calling you up if you have a non-agendized item. Okay, great. So let's get that off. So we're going to be doing two minutes for all of you guys. Can you take time instead of? Okay, first, and just so you know, we're trying to organize it over here if you wonder what we're working on. Okay, first I have Mimi Willard. Would you please come up, Mimi Willard? Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, trustees. I'm Mimi Willard, president of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. I spent two decades on Wall Street as a financial analyst with expertise in evaluating the financial health and prospects of publicly traded companies. While school districts are very different, many of the same considerations apply. When I look at San Rafael, there are already existing fiscal challenges that are evident. Both, both of the school districts are running current year deficit and the future looks even more challenging because remaining pandemic funds will soon be spent. Further declines in enrollment would reduce ADA payments. Coming labor settlements will push expenses higher. And absent dramatic action, your reserves will keep falling. There are additional external pressures which may not be adequately reflected in your budget, including Marin property tax dollar growth is decelerating per the assessor. And federal education dollars are likely to drop sharply. So meanwhile, there is financial market chaos that impacts schools materially. Tariffs will drive inflation higher. Outlook for the state education funding is worrisome. Stock market volatility has dried up revenues from, tax revenues from appreciated stock. And today we had a two-point-four percent plunge in the S and P 500, which is down sixteen percent from its January high. And bonds have fallen sharply. This is, there is increasing concern that it is a result of this that CalPERS and CalSTRS will at some point fail to meet their seven percent return targets, requiring higher school district contributions to cover pension obligations. Meanwhile, the muni bond, Carnage, precludes school bond refinancing at lower rates. So, um, this, uh, this is, in summary, this is not the time to add anything new to your unrestricted budget.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much. Um, okay. And I'm going to let my colleague here do this.
So this is for Stephanie Andre. Do I say the topic as well? Okay, this topic is for, um, Serenity Essential Housing Project.
Yes. Hi, trustees and members of the district staff. I'm a Larkspur City Council member and also a member of the Ad Hoc Committee that is investigating Serenity. Um, I have 30 years of capital markets experience and 20 of those years specializing in real estate. Uh, Serenity is a 342-unit apartment complex in Larkspur Landing across the street from Marin Country Mart. While it's located within Larkspur, Serenity is part of the San Rafael School District. It is supposed to be run as an essential housing, uh, property for middle-income renters, defined as 80% to 120% of area median income. Serenity is receiving a property tax exemption of $3 million a year, uh, for a total of $14 million over the last five years. The San Rafael School District's elementary and high school combined have lost over $3 million in tax revenue over the last five years. The elementary schools are losing $350,000 a year and the high school about $275,000 a year. Here are our findings at Serenity. One, we found no public benefit provided at Serenity. After five years, the property is only 59% leased to middle-income renters. We also found that people who are income-qualified are paying higher rents than the people who are not income-qualified, by four to 10% higher. Um, taxpayer dollars through the tax exemption are being used to pay the interest on the bonds and being paid, uh, to high-priced external advisors and asset managers instead of providing discounts to middle-income renters. So despite, and even despite the high rents, the property is currently in default on its public bonds. But Serenity is not unique. Four of the 14 properties in this JPA are in default. Um, meanwhile, the board of the JPA, their external consultant, the program administrator, and the property manager all continue to take fees for their, quote, "administration of Serenity." After our year-long investigations, we, the city council last Wednesday opted to withdraw from this JPA in an attempt to try and recoup our property taxes.
She can take your comments.
Carmen already.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we have, um, Anne Levinson.
In the interest of time, though, I'll just email you.
Are you sure? You can do two minutes. You can do two minutes. You'll get the ding and then.
Honestly, I came here mostly to support Coleman because I'm a Coleman mom. We love Coleman. And, um, we get really excited when our principal talks about the wonderful things that are happening in our school because it's a really fantastic school. But I also really enjoyed the conversation around AI. So my comments today are around AI and they're off the cuff. So bear with me. Uh, I want to say thank you to San Rafael School District as well as the board for realizing that AI is something we do need to investigate further and figure out how to appropriately, um, incorporate into our schools because it is something that we do need to help our students learn how to do appropriately, safely, effectively. I want to put a little plug in there. As a parent, as in like your next rollout, before things really get rolled out, please consider what kind of messaging and education will also be offered to the parents and guardians of students so that we understand what our students are supposed to be doing with AI um, and how we can support that and also understand it ourselves because I am constantly trying to figure out how to use AI in my own personal life, let alone my child's education. Um, I also have a question around, um, the Convingo, um, study where you found, you found an improvement of all student writing after using that program. I would love to understand if there is a study that shows if that improvement continues after using that tool when they write independently afterwards. I think that would be really interesting to make sure that, that, that tool is helping them develop, but that development continues to progress after using the tool. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
13 seconds to go. All right.
You nailed it. Okay, so now. Okay, so now we're on, okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And now we're going to move to consent. Approving consent and, uh, we are, just as a reminder for people that joined us, we are moving number 25 to a future meeting and we will be pulling 34, 35, and 38. Right. So can I ask for approval of the remaining? While we pull 25 for the future, 34, 35, and 38, we will discuss. Oh, um, were there any non-agendized item comments on Zoom?
Yeah, I, I just wanted.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, yeah.
I'm just, I'm looking. I don't have any hands raised. Um, but for the 16 people that are on, uh, I'm a sub, so, uh, but if you are interested, please raise your hand and we're happy to allow you to talk.
And you're subbing well for non-agendized.
The non-agenda items. Okay, we do have one hand. Linda.
Yes, hi. I, I guess I'm a little confused. I don't have the agenda before me. And so I don't know if you're going to be talking about the Oak Hill.
Not yet. Not yet. Thank you.
Tonight.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We will speak with you soon. Okay, so no one else raise their hand.
I have one other. I have a Taylor Garcia. Taylor, I'm going to allow you to talk.
And two minutes.
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Then, uh, Taylor. Taylor, you can unmute.
Hello, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, so my name's Taylor Garcia. I was asked to participate tonight and just kind of give some background about, um, the, uh, the housing, the staff housing. So.
Okay, that's an agendized item and you can actually, uh, address that when that's on the agenda.
I was asked to do it tonight.
You, you will. Sorry.
Go ahead. Go for it. Go for it.
It's later, it's later tonight.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. It's gonna be a long night.
That's all we have for now. And again, if there's other things coming up, uh, as the agendas come up, feel free to raise your hand again and you'll have your chance to talk.
All right. Okay, great. Thank you. So we're back to the consent agenda. So can I get approval for the, for all of the ones that are remaining?
Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda for the remainder.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Rotus and second by trustee Dignava Marsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. I thought I was.
Item 34, 35, 38, which are Ed Services. I wanted to acknowledge item 31. Um, just approved, uh, for partnership with Canal Alliance and University Prep to provide a ELOP-style program at Davidson Middle School this summer. So if they're in the audience, I wanted to thank you. We're very excited about this program.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item, item number 34, that is, I'm going to go really quick. That is the renewal of the standing between B A C R for the summer program. It's Stephanie Close, if you'd like to get that on.
Do you guys have specific questions? This is a renewal, um, that is in line with our ELOP requirements and, uh, growth, uh, continued growth in our, uh, summer programs.
I brought it. So, um, not specific question beyond a reminder of it's a $1.7 million item. Um, so who benefits and how helps the, the community?
Yeah, so I'm going to do like very, very brief ELOP. So, uh, coming out of COVID, one of the governor's initiatives was expanded learning opportunities programs. And there are some requirements that go along with that as well as a substantial increase in funding. So it used to just be ACES funding, which is about 1.3 in our district. We're now up to over $5 million through ELOP funding. And it was really an expansion of out-of-school access for students. And so it includes a nine-hour day. Um, it includes offering the program to all students who qualify as unduplicated, so free-reduced lunch, uh, specifically as well as English learners, um, as well as 30 days outside of the school year. And so this basically is our summer, our intercession, as well as our after-school programs. Um, and we do those with a number of community partners. And one of the things the board has requested, um, for a number of years was continued expansion of both our summer programs and our after-school programs. And so this contract specifically, um, we have been working, um, Mike Taylor, if you still here, um, has been working really hard to kind of right-size those programs, um, to make sure that we have the right number of spaces for students who want to attend. Um, but it's also summer. And so what that means is we have kids dip in and dip out. And that's really not how this is designed. So we've worked overtime to really right-size this program and that's a reflection of this.
It's a great reminder of, it's a great reminder of these services we have for our students.
Yeah. So this is a really lovely program. Um, I was, one kind of key feature that we have really worked on. Research has really shown that summer programs, um, have actually the greatest impact when they're not focused on tutoring, but they're focused on a summer camp experience that grows language, opportunities to interact with, um, really authentic, um, uh, math, for example, and authentic, uh, literacy and then, uh, experiential things. So we do regular field trips, um, and that's definitely a highlight for our students.
Do the trustees like to vote on each item as they come up? Or would you want to do them all in one fell swoop?
It was to them all in one fell swoop. Is that okay?
Right.
All right, okay. Perfect.
Number 35.
Okay. So number 35.
Yeah, so this is one of our other partners. This one is actually for the school, so it's that after-school time. Um, one of the things that happened when ELOP funding came on is it really was across the district, whereas ACES funding was very targeted to certain schools. So we've been working with B A C R at a number of our schools. And YMCA was a newer partner to us that already had an existing smaller, uh, fee-based program at some of our schools. But they also really stepped up during COVID, um, as long with the city of San Rafael. And so this program serves students, um, from San Pedro and Bahia Vista at the Morro Community Center after school, as well as at Sun Valley where there was an existing fee-based program. We now have a sliding scale program that continues to expand there. Um, and so the, this contract specifically serves students in the after-school programs at those locations from those three school sites who qualify for free-reduced lunch. So this is basically a fully funded, um, opportunity for them for after-school programs. We, um, uh, offer that families can have donations to those and that helps us sustain our program ongoing.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for that reminder.
Yes. Great. And number 38, Ms. Leanna Porle will be talking about the contract for Changing Perspectives for 25, 26.
Yes, so we are really excited to be entering into our third year partnering, partnering with Changing Perspectives. It'll be year three with Coleman Elementary and year two with Glenwood. And really Changing Perspectives is an agency that we've been partnering with to, um, uh, improve our inclusive practices. Um, and we do that through professional development, um, site visits from Sam Drazen, who is the lead with Changing Perspectives. Um, he comes in and shows our staff, um, how to do things like co-teaching. How do we implement strategies to make sure that all of our students are included and, um, served in the least restrictive environment? Um, and our main, one of our main goals with our work with, with Changing Perspectives is to, um, increase staff capacity to support students with learning differences and students with disabilities. Um, and not only to work with general education staff, but also to work with our special education teams to see how can we partner together to support our students, uh, with the ultimate goal of ensuring that we're supporting students within the least restrictive environment, um, so that we're not having to look at alternative placements and that we're keeping kids in their neighborhood schools and supporting them for the best of our ability.
Thank you. And I guess my question is like, how are we? I think it's so important and critical, right? And so I thank you for this opportunity. How are we looking at results or what, what is like, what's the outcome we're hoping and how are we going to measure that?
So part of the work that Sam does and he, um, engaged in this, this past year with Coleman was staff surveys. So looking at perceptions, um, of our staff and where we feel we are in the process. And so there's pre-data with that. And then there's also, uh, post-data that we'll take with, uh, subsequent staff surveys. We're also, this work is, uh, very closely connected with the Elementary Compliance and Improvement Monitoring Plan that is tied to our work with the C V E. Um, a couple of years back, we were identified as disproportionate for students in, uh, separate settings. So we have too many students attending non-public schools, too many students who have been removed from their schools of residence and placed in alternative settings. Um, and so we do monitor our data through the state. Uh, and we are actually, we're seeing growth. Over the past three years, we're seeing that we are slowly inching closer to the California target for students in, uh, separate settings. So we're getting kids back. We are serving more students in their neighborhood schools. This work is directly related to that. Um, and so that's another metric that we're looking at when we're looking at our progress, um, in this area.
Right. Thank you. And I, and I know that Glenwood has an event coming up Tuesday, so I'm excited to attend that and see, see it in action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, can we, um, can we, yes.
For item 35, I'm on the, oh, the YMCA advisory board, so I, I would go to.
I would recuse you.
Yeah.
Okay, so then maybe I'll do separate then. Let's do separate. Okay, can I have a motion to approve consent item number 34? Motion to approve consent item number 34. Trustee Dignava Marsh. Moved by trustee Dignava Marsh, second by trustee Rotus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Um, do I have a motion to approve, um, consent number 35?
A motion to approve consent item number 35.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Rotus, second by Dignava Marsh. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have one staying. And then can I have approval of consent item number 38?
Approval of consent item number 38. Motion to approve.
Okay, moved by trustee Dignava Marsh. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Jason?
Okay, second by trustee Lau. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those. That number passes and thank you for the discussion.
I have one question at this point, uh, for Carmen.
Yes.
Is, is this the point at which I can bring up for future contracts that are, say, a hundred thousand dollars or more that we could, we can move them to discussion and consent versus them being in just consent?
I can definitely do that.
Thank you for not forgetting.
So any contracts that are over a hundred thousand should be in discussion and action.
Discussion and action.
Got you. Yes, that's what we'll do.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
That's not, well, it will, it will be. That was, I'm bringing that up.
Regardless of whether they're renewals or not.
That's great.
Okay, so is the board in agreement with that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is live because we can't talk about this together. So you just, oh, we just got to talk about something together.
That's definitely, we'll follow, we'll start following that. Good idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Because we get more of like what just happened.
Oh, no, I love that. No, that's great. I like that.
All right. Thank you, team. This is great. Now we're going to move to, uh, the public hearing. And so business services, public hearing on the 2025 School Impact Fee Justification Studies and the proposed Level 1 Developer Fee Rate Adjustment and Consideration of Adoption of Resolution Number 2425-63. Proving and adopting the fee justifying studies of for residential, commercial, industrial development projects and authorizing an increase in statutory Level 1 development fees. All right. And that was, that's, thank you. Thanks so much for being here.
Said Tim, is he coming back now?
So wait.
Nope.
That's not Tim. It's Bob. Sorry.
Hey, Bob.
Hi.
Wow, Tim really jumped the gun.
Why do you think I grabbed a coffee? Go ahead, Bob.
I, I, I will try to keep this. I do believe we may have Doug Floyd online in case the board has questions. Um, Carolina Strexy Martin, you said it beautifully there. We are talking about a public hearing around a developer fee justification study as well as the, uh, consideration of the adoption of this resolution. Um, wanted to give some broader context. Um, the developer fees are fees that public agencies, um, levy on, um, folks who are, um, building new buildings, whether it's residential or commercial, um, expanding their homes, renovating, adding square footage. Um, and we use those fees by statute. We need to use those fees to expand and improve our facilities and infrastructure to accommodate the growth that would be associated with, um, with those, uh, expansions, right? Um, and periodically the State Allocation Board, um, uh, updates their maximum level of fees that can be, um, that districts can charge. And so periodically our district, as many other public agencies, will do a developer fee justification study to see. to see, uh, you know, if our fees should also be adjusted. Um, and we worked with Doug Floyd and, uh, a consultancy called Toppel and Gruber to do that justification study. And it did result in some slight increases to the fees that we can charge. Um, which you'll see in the item. Um, and I wanted to just provide, uh, Doug, uh, an opportunity to, to weigh in or share any highlights that, that I may have, have left out.
Sure, thank you very much. Um, good evening, board members, district cabinet. Um, as Mr. Markucci mentioned, these, uh, the state allocation board, uh, sets a maximum rate that districts can charge across the state. And they, uh, per law, these fee items, uh, fee rates, uh, get adjusted every other year and even numbered years to account for inflation. And really the, the primary goal of the fee justification study is to demonstrate that the school district, um, is reasonably justified and increasing the amount to those maximum rates and which our study did demonstrate that. Um, with that, I'd, I'd open up to any questions. I will also add that, uh, if the rates are approved tonight by law, uh, they cannot go into effect until sixty days later, which would be June twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
Any questions?
And ju- just to add to that, so currently in the elementary district, uh, we are charging three dollars and thirty one cents a square foot. And that fee was raised through this process to three dollars fifty seven cents per square foot. So that's an example of an adjustment. Uh, we make an adjustment for residential and commercial in the elementary district and residential and commercial in the high school district.
Trustees, any questions?
No questions. For me.
No question, yeah.
No questions.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. I have no questions. I think, you know, we are, all of our schools in America are worried about our budgets. And I think, you know, this is, it's good. Also. What? Oh, I have to open the public hearing? So what do I do?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. There we go. Anyone have any comments?
Okay.
Okay, now.
And on, on Zoom just.
Anyone, anyone Zoom? How's our stuff doing over there? Doing great.
Let's see. Uh, does anybody have any, uh, public, uh, hearing comments on this topic?
Developer.
Developer fees.
What's going on?
Cars.
Yes, and then now you close the hearing and then you move to approve the resolution.
Okay, all right, I'm closing it now. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, moved by trustee DeNeva Marsh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by?
Trustee Rhodes.
Trustee Rhodes, I'm sorry, I just can't.
No, it's cool.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That passes. All right, thank you. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
Thank you. All right.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, now we have capital facilities and then, uh.
Welcome back.
Hi. This meeting started on a solid note and, and my presentation is celebratory. So I was excited to come up, I'm sorry, I went early. Uh, so I'm here today to, to talk about. I'll wait for the presentation to pop up, but this is it. Okay, great. Can we do full screen or we gotta live with that?
Okay.
Same.
Yeah, keep going.
So, um, we're here to talk about the work we have planned for this summer and to talk about the work that we have in the hopper in design moving forward, next slide. And since I don't have a clicker, I'll be saying next slide often and it's not, not trying to be demeaning. But I just want to point out, our work is dirty. Right, the work that we do, uh, this group put sixty five piers in the ground, sixty feet deep at Davidson to raise the new multipurpose room out of the tsunami zone. So, uh, it is going to be a very safe building, next slide. Clarity, next slide. As I said, we're here to talk about that and we're also aligning it with our strategic goal plans. Next slide. So this summer, we have a lot of work, right? We have thirty nine million dollars worth of work that we're going to do over an eight week period. Uh, that comes out to be, as we see here, four point eight eight, six million a week. Uh, that's equivalent because thirty percent of that is labor costs. And that's about three hundred people, uh, a week, uh, for the hour of full FTE. And I will say that I used AI to write that paragraph. Uh, furthermore, the installation of four arrays is being financed through a PPA, a power purchase agreement in three schools, next slide. We have construction at every elementary school except the short, um, early learning center and Laurel Dell. Next slide. So Coleman Elementary School, and I'm going to move back and forth because I want to touch the screen and point at things. We have a new kindergarten playground lunch area, two lunch shade structures, an upper ground playground, planting and irrigation improvements, and a new digital marquee partially funded, uh, by the Coleman PTA. Next slide. So you can see we have work in the yellow zones everywhere on campus this summer, next slide. In the kindergarten, we have a new play area. Well, we, we did a, we had a committee that met and it was parents and it was staff. Uh, we did a staff survey, we did a PTA survey to talk about what should be the next project. And we listed and they were very adamant that their play space needs upgrade. So we have a shade structure, new play structure and a garden for the kindergarten, next slide. We also are at the same time touching the area for the upper grades and adding a new shade structure. Um, there's new laws in California regarding, uh, how we set up our campuses and how we treat water. So there are bio swells within that campus that treat the water when you add new asphalt or new roof light, next slide. We're doing a shade structure. Ours actually will have six posts, not eight, but this is the only image I could share of it. Next slide. Sorry. And this, as you enter the parking lot, with the new PTA partially funded digital sign. The great thing about a digital sign is you can do multiple languages. Next slide. Bahia Vista Elementary School, this is the story, right? Our, our intention was to do this project next summer. While we did a solar installation this summer. Well, that solar installation has turned out to be not fiscally or financially able to do it, so it's not happening. We're rushing to move forward with the playground because it's never going to be less expensive to delay. Uh, we've talked with the site, we have a communication plan that we do. And normally we talk to staff, PTA, and then send a letter to the neighbors. I have talked with staff at, at everywhere except for Venetia Valley. There's got, their meeting got moved to this Wednesday. I have talked with all PTAs except for San Pedro and, uh, Venetia Valley, they're also this Wednesday. So we, we have, um, this plan where we've told all of them this may happen. So it is a new transitional kindergarten playground, new all weather field, planting and irrigation. We don't have approval from the state yet. We have a contractor on board for pre-construction. We may not get stamps from the, from the state until July, which means we were start construction in August, which means we would be building on the campus, next slide. In this area, uh, through December. Next slide. Here's a new field and new play area. Next slide. We met with students and we talked about what it is that they wanted to get, right? So on this campus, all the coverings are an, uh, a heat reduction, um, surface. So it reduces the heat off the asphalt about ten degrees. Next slide. And when we met with the students and we said, what kind of play structure do you want? What kind of theme do you want? They wanted an ocean theme. All right, so this is all rubber. The sand, the beach, that's a whale tail and a whale head popping up as a climbing structure. There is a surf shack. Uh, it's, it's going to be an exciting change in the school. And I got to tell you, when I met with the parents, uh, their biggest compliment was, thank you for asking the students.
No.
Next slide. And at all of our fields, uh, we're adding a logo for the site. We also had a public input meeting where we reached out to all of the soccer groups and all of our users to say, hey, this is what we're doing. You just want to make sure if there's any striping that we could do now that would help with the programs that have in place. And America Scores is a program that runs at the Skype. And they said, can we get six small fields? Cause we have six events that happen at one time. So that's what the blue lines are for. Uh, the, the other lines are for a regulation field for Unite. Next slide. At Glenwood Elementary School, it's a very big project. That's going to take two years. I want to say that we have new fire alarms going at multiple sites. And one of the big changes on the new fire alarm systems is they now talk to you. And they say, attention, attention, we have an emergency condition. Proceed immediately to the stairwells and exit the buildings. Do not use the elevators, please remain calm. And then it beeps really loud and hurts your ears. But it's, it's less of the beep and more of the verbal. So we're, we're, every place I say we're doing a fire alarm, that's one of the, one of the changes that they'll get. But at Glenwood, we have new trenching for power, new pads. Like we're going to, we're going to do all of the underground to get ready for summer two. We thought we could do air conditioning in one summer, we can't. The lead time on the new power that we needed from PG&E is fifty six weeks. So we're waiting for the new PG&E transformer. And once that lands on site, we'll energize everything next summer, but we're doing all the prep this summer. Go ahead to the next slide. We're working everywhere, next slide. These are open trenches and everywhere that a trench ends, it's landing at a cage for a condenser for air conditioning. Next slide. These are those cages. Next slide. I'm a little bit quick, so.
I am.
I'm going too fast, stop.
Yep.
San Pedro Elementary School, we have installation of air conditioning systems. Again, the code required fire alarm, trenching, HVAC, a new all weather field, improved planting and a new shade structure, next slide. We're working everywhere. This hasn't gone to the neighbors yet.
Not one?
We, it goes out once I talk to the PTA on the seventeenth. Next slide. So in buildings C and B, it's new air conditioning because those are the only classrooms that don't have air conditioning. But it's new fire alarm on all four spaces, next slide. So this is their new field. They asked for their logo to be as you came down these new stairway onto the field. And they'll have a new shade structure at the top up here. And when we met with local soccer at the Yellow Squares, they said, could you add a goalie box? Even though it's not, it's not, uh, regulation, it just makes the little kids feel big. So we're adding it. Next slide. Sun Valley Elementary School. We have installation of air conditioning systems, again, the fire alarm and some extensive trenching, next slide. The area of work is limited. This is the only area on the campus that doesn't have air conditioning. Next slide. These will be the areas for the new condensers, next slide. And the open trenches, next slide. These are the outdoor speakers that'll be on this building. Next slide. Davidson Middle School. Everything that we have that's in italics is ongoing project, right? So I'm just, we have all, a new all weather field, a new kiln room. We have underground sanitary sewer connections, partially funded by the city of San Rafael. The city of San Rafael has been very, uh, cooperative and very helpful. We have an onsite system on our campus, which is, um, owned by the city and it is failing. And it can't handle the load that we want to add. So we're upsizing the system and we're splitting the cost with the city and we're going to make it privately owned. We will allow all that system. A new baseball field dugouts partially funded by San Rafael Little League, thank you very much. They already sent their check. And the new multipurpose building continuing, next slide. We're working everywhere that there's not going to be class this summer. Next slide. We have a new kiln ring in the twenties wing. Next slide. We have the new field and blacktop, next slide. This is, again, we got input from PE at this site. And we got input from soccer, soccer loved our field. They had no, Little League had no issue with what we were doing. Um, but we had, we made a lot of changes for PE for their program. Uh, next slide. And we showed them this striping on the hardtop and they made changes again. So it's not going to be this. It'll be slightly different from this, uh, the numbering they want to, you know, we want to make sure that they can have their program. But it will still have fifty, four sets of fifty, just going to make them in squares instead of rectangles. The great thing about this is we now have one, two, three, four, five, six pickleball courts. We have three volleyball courts, we have three full courts, we have two, three half courts. It's a big school, so we'll have nine half court games that can happen at one time. Next slide. And we have the multipurpose room that's going in currently. As you can see, when I said building in a tsunami zone, it is up on a pedestal. Next slide. And this is an interior shot. It's going to be beautiful. Next slide. Venetia Valley. Remodeling two kindergarten buildings throughout the school year. We have landscape and irrigation improvements, a new classroom furniture for the middle school. And this is where one of the solar is being installed, next slide. We'll be working on all of these areas while they have summer school. Excellent. This is the solar shade structure that will be going out to the neighbors. Next slide. And the kindergarten buildings are going to be modernized, they're at the front of the campus. Next slide. There's a lot of interior finishes, new windows, new doors. It's, I didn't want to give you a picture of everything we were doing, but the big moves are adding a new entrance on the back. We're adding a new staff toilet. Next slide. So we have construction in the high school district, that San Rafael High, Terrell Linda High, the district office, which is significant, and the district office annex. My department capital improvements is moving to Old Guyenas, uh, into what was the Braun Center and is now the district office annex. It's have two offices that'll be, well, I'll say, next slide. San Rafael High School, the new project is preparation phase one for the LA building HVAC. We were hoping we could do the entire project this summer. We're unable to get it, but we can do some prep work for it. The aquatic center's continuing, doghouse, continuing athletic facilities, continuing fence and gate, continuing fire alarm, continuing. And two solar installations, next slide. We're working everywhere. Don't even come here, don't even look at it. Next slide. So if you orient yourself along Mission Street, we have shade structures. And on the hillside, we have shade, I mean, solar structures for both spaces. Next slide. So on the top of the LA building, we have to order a sixty foot by nineteen foot sixteen hundred pound air handler. It's the size of a wheel car, it's a little bigger than a wheel car. So, um, we're unable to get that in time for the summer. It, it, the lead time line is just too significant. So, but we are be able to do some structural work to prepare the roof to handle sixteen hundred pounds. Next slide. This will continue, next slide.
That's beautiful.
It's beautiful doghouse.
Yeah. Can't wait.
Terrell Linda High School. Go ahead, that was good.
Oh, it's good, yeah.
Terrell Linda High School, there's a new roof on this building. Uh, new staff toilets, wait, little ahead, new staff toilets.
Move faster, smart.
Uh, new student toilets and black box seat are lighting. Ongoing is the aquatic center fitness building, athletic facility mods, fire alarm, power purchase agreement, solar will be installed here as well. Next slide. We're working pretty much everywhere. Next slide. So this is the solar array that'll be on the back of the campus. Yes, ma'am?
No, I was saying that was on the top.
Oh, yes, and the, the one that is furthest up the hill is only at a ten foot at its lowest point where the standard is twelve foot. Because it's not a space that'll be, uh, people operating underneath it. We just need it high enough that the mower can still fit underneath. Next slide. New roof on this building. Next slide. We're doing staff and student toilets, uh, everyone's very excited. Next slide. There's a chance the staff toilets may not be ready and we may have to have, uh, trailers for them. But we're, we, we won't know till July, sorry staff. Uh, new pool. Next slide. And again, they have their athletic facilities. Next slide. The district office, so basically downstairs on this side of the building, everything through the hallway from enrollment through payroll to deputy superintendent to the mailroom. We have to move temporary offices for six weeks, human resources, deputy superintendent, accounting and mailroom. And then for six to nine months, and every time I meet with them, I say nine months to a year, but that's okay. Six to nine months. Enrollment's gonna move upstairs. And payroll is gonna move with us over to Old Guyenas. Next slide. It's a lot. But over the summer, we'll have signage that brings people into HR. Over the summer, we'll have signage that sends people in here to get to the DO because this area will be under construction. Accounting, Bob's Office, the mailroom. Next slide. This is the area that is being remodeled. It'll look something like that. It is gonna be a welcoming space for our families. When you come in now, it feels very less than welcoming. Not by the people, just by the physical environment. Next slide. District Office Annexes. We're remodeling the toilets and access improvements, fencing. We're gonna make two training rooms, remodel offices for capital facilities. It currently doesn't have heat or cooling, so we're adding that. And we're gonna pave the driveway. Next. So you can see the top two offices of capital facilities, there's a shared bathroom. Payroll's moving in temporarily, district office. We are paving the driveline which goes by Wow Care. It's currently dirt. And since we're gonna be having training there and it needs to be, any building that we touch, we try to improve. So we're doing our best to improve it. Next slide. Projects in design. Ed Coleman, new replacement. This is a request from maintenance operations. It's their number one issue at this site. Davidson Modernization, we're looking at classroom mods. The sanitary sewer improvements. Glenwood, we have a new multipurpose room. Sun Valley, we have student drop-off and access. We have not yet met with anyone to get input on what the solution is. We'll be meeting with the community, the neighbors, the parents and staff. They call this project the orphan project at San Rafael High School. It's, it's the HVAC units in just little places that there's no air conditioning. So we're gonna add little pieces. And the visual performing arts and technology is a design-build project that I, that both president and vice president, Martin and Turner are coming on the interview process next Tuesday, just for me again. And it's eight o'clock. And, and we have four teams that are submitting proposals. At Terre Laine High School, we have track phase two, where we're gonna be moving the shot put down into the field. Because right now, if you're a kid who plays shot put or throws shot put, your parents can't sit in the stand and watch you while your siblings running on the track. So it separates families. We're doing our best to put all the, all the track events in one space. And classroom modernizations in the district office. We're looking at phase three and corporate yard improvements. Next slide. We have some challenges. Next slide. Construction will continue throughout the school year at San Rafael High School, Terre Laine and Davidson. New trade barriers and unstable markets contribute increased construction costs. You just are. And staffing issues at regulatory agencies continue to extend the review process. What used to take ninety days is now taking six months. Sometimes nine months. Next slide. Heander. The construction is a temporary improvement. Temporary, sorry, temporary interruption to a permanent improvement. It all goes to temporary improvement for a permanent, oh, I'm not even gonna say it. Just read that. Construction is loud, messy, and disruptive and will cause big emotions in our community. We will approach those big emotions with kindness. Right? And we, Jessica's here, our attorney, she's, she lifts a lot of the big emotions. So our next steps is we are awaiting some approvals from the agencies so that we can come to you with contracts for award in the next four meetings. And once we have actual costs to complete, as we've done in the past, we'll bring you a budget update saying here's what it actually costs to finish out this project. Next slide. So we are expediting a twenty-seven million dollar sale in the bonds for the high school district. The cost of issuance is less than the cost of escalation and delaying projects. And we are exploring similar process with elementary school bonds. You know, we have, we have a lot of work. And I just want to give a shout out to Patty Lamas, the operations manager of our team that keeps everything moving forward. Bob's been great. You know, it's, it's, we have a lot of work this summer. And we're rushing to spend the dollars in a way that is thoughtful, but at the same time, expeditious.
Right.
And if anybody has any questions? Next slide. Contact me there.
Any comments or questions? Thank you for your presentation, it was great. I love the yellow, but I want to also ask the board here, any?
No questions, and I, I can see you becoming a lot of people's favorite person. That's, that's all for me.
My only comment is I really appreciate that you, you and your team intentionally asked students and staff and community partners like America's Core about how to best utilize the field, the, creating a sense of community, the logos. It's just really uplifting across the board and that's really notable. And if you haven't already subscribed to our social media to see the project videos that you and your, you have done, a lot of transparency and real-time information, truly appreciate that.
Thank you, trustee DeNaba Marsh.
Yeah, I would echo the same thing. I've been enjoying seeing the update, the videos and all the progress on social media and LinkedIn and Facebook. So I appreciate that transparency and that, that update that everyone can see what we're doing, so thank you.
Yeah, please think, you know, on my behalf, I don't know if the board agrees, please thank everybody who is doing the dirty work.
Yeah.
You know, there's hot days coming up in the summer, it's hard work, please, please give them my regards.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee, Connor?
No, I just wanted to say for, if we can spread the word of, like, you're batting a thousand in terms of all the facilities are wonderful when they're, when they're finished, it's not great all the time for, or no, I mean, just, it's a small interruption when you're building these things. So just everyone to put a reminder out to anyone who is getting impacted by it. It's, it's, it's a really improving your community, make everyone look great. And so facilities are totally worth it, so thank you.
You know, I'm biased, I'm on the committee and it's such an exciting committee. So I just thank you for all the hard work and I just love your passion around it because I can tell, I, I mean, I was at Glenwood when you came and interviewed students and you were so intentional about it. So thank you for, this is so exciting. I'm very excited because, you know, my kids will be in all those schools.
You know, I, I can say, I just wanted to comment on the, the cross-platform, talking to other, you know how I get that? Bob. Like, Bob's worked here for a hundred years. Dad lived, you know, I mean, it's like, we had a call the other day with San Rafael Little League. And I'm talking to the guy and I realized he has, I, I do bending hearts, I hand out hearts. He's got ten of my hearts, right? So I know his wife, so it's just, Marin is a small place.
I mean, I have one of those hearts in the wallet.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, now we are going into keep up the amazing work and the sizzle reels. Okay, now discussion and action session. I think this is why we're all here. Usually it's just us and like three people and now we have you and we're holding you prisoner.
I mean, there's three online always.
I have one, Linda, that is online. And so Linda, I'm going to.
But that's for the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's for Oak Hill.
For Oak Hill, sorry, never mind. We have to, one second, Linda, we're gonna, we're almost there.
Okay, we're going there next. We're going there next, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So number one, superintendent approval of resolution two-four-two-five-nine-three of the San Rafael City School Award of Education authorizing and directing staff to pursue participation in the Oak Hill Apartments Project and to negotiate the guarantee agreement according to the terms set forth and the term sheet proposal.
All right, so.
So now it's time to be able to discuss the next steps in this project. And with that, we have, it's now a years in development. It targets low and moderate income households earning fifty to eighty percent of the AMI, which is area median income. And we have a group of colleagues that are going to present this, this project to us this evening. And the outcome is that we would like the board to vote on a resolution moving forward for next steps, so.
And I just want to remind people that are in the room and online that after the presentation, you will be able to share your public comments. And again, if you came in late, if you please fill this out, that would be wonderful. Or if you're online, you will have to raise your hand.
Yeah, and I'd like to introduce Matthew Hyrum and he is with him this evening as well.
All right, well, good evening, board, and thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here. This is a critical point on our, our project. And it's been a long day, so I'll try to be as brief as possible and happy to answer questions. I do have our team here. We have Ken Lippy from Marin County Ed. I have developer Bruce Dorfman and our financial advisor Mark Pressman. They are available to answer any more specific questions you may have. So I have a, a high-level overview and as I said, happy to answer questions. So next slide, please.
So just an overview, this JPA was created by the Board of Supervisors and the County Office of Education. I did want to differentiate from the GPA that was referred to earlier on the Serenity Project. That's a different JPA. Our sole mission for our JPA is to finance and build the Oak Hill Project and, and to do so in a cost-covered way. We have five board members, two are appointed by Marin County Education. Three are appointed by the County Board of Supervisors and there are two public members among those three county appointments. Next slide, please. So I think all of you are familiar with the business case around workforce housing. And we, many Bay Area counties have already begun to implement Bay Area housing. Riff has not as of yet, and, and so this is an exciting project to move that forward. Basically, it's trying to deal with the high cost of housing and, and the turnover. And when I think of turnover, it's not just recruitment and retention, it's the retention part of it. And when I worked for the county, we were able to hire employees. But when they lived an hour away, eventually they would take a job closer to home and we would lose all the valuable experience and training we had given them. The Novato School District for workers that are between twenty-five and thirty-four only average one-point-six years. So they're experiencing high levels of turnover, approximately fourteen percent. So this is really a, a big retention tool for our districts. And many of our workers will qualify for the low and moderate income housing. There was a study among all county public schools that showed that fourteen-hundred employees were interested in workforce housing. Project summary, basically, this is on eight acres of land that the state would be leasing to us for a dollar a year for the next ninety-nine years as long as we serve this affordable housing purpose. There are actually two projects. One is Eden Housing with a hundred-and-fifteen units of low-income housing from thirty to sixty percent AMI. And then our project is a hundred-and-thirty-five units, seventy-five percent educators and twenty-five percent county. And there's some shared infrastructure economies of scale around the parking and the, the central facilities. Next slide. This, as you can see in the picture, this is gonna be high-quality housing with good views, close to public transit, Larkspur Landing and the ferry as well as the Smart Train. It's our develop, a private developer partner builds private housing. This is gonna be comparable to private sector market rate housing. The two exceptions is it will not have a pool and it will have a shower surround to, to reduce the amount of ongoing maintenance that we would have. But otherwise, it's gonna have washer and dryer in each unit, high-quality housing. So by far, the biggest challenges we had, just like with many affordable housing projects, is around the budget gap for the project. And so based on our affordability assumptions, we're facing a sixteen-million-dollar gap. We are seeking several strategies to help close that gap. We're continuing to seek grant funding from the state, the county, and other funders. We are actively working with the Ring Community Foundation on a lower-cost, shorter-term loan that would be part of our financing that would help reduce the gap. One of the things that we could do, but we really don't want to do, and is around increasing the rental rates. And the reason we don't want to do that is because we're trying to learn the lessons from some of the projects that haven't been as successful. And so when we look at successful projects versus not successful projects, the successful projects are generally eighty, below eighty percent AMI. So that there's a high demand for the housing and so that those units are filled. The projects that haven't been successful is when they're charging market rate or a hundred-and-twenty percent AMI. And so many of the projects that you read about are those projects that are charging a hundred-and-twenty percent AMI, which is very near market and that's one of the reasons they're struggling to fill those units. So we don't want to do that to help close our gap. And so that's why by far, the, the most impactful strategy that we're seeking is this workforce guarantee housing program. And it will close ten million dollars of the gap. And so that's what the next slides will be talking about. So, you know, for many schools who do this on their own, they are doing financing that requires that obligation, that financing obligation. The concept around this is to proportionally have the guarantee based on the number of units that the school districts and the agencies have. So for instance, the county of Marin has twenty-five-hundred employees. But because we want to lead with educators, they only have thirty-four units. So they're responsible for twenty-five percent of, of the revenue stream to, to pay for the bonds. And then, you know, we have other districts, we have the College of Marin. So we have a first step approval for the county, the College of Marin, MCOE, and for Novato. So San Rafael would be the last piece to get us to a hundred percent. A hundred percent is really what we need to do to get the benefits of the ten million dollars. If we only had eighty percent guaranteed financing, that wouldn't be as impactful because if there were any issues, they'd say, well, that comes from the other twenty percent. So we need to have the hundred percent guarantor. Next slide, please. So how it works is a school district or the county acts as the guarantee, a guarantor for their portion of the revenue stream. That in turn lowers interest rates and it saves ten million dollars. That ten million dollars equates to allowing us to reduce rents by four hundred dollars a month for each unit on an ongoing basis. So it's very impactful, that, that ten million dollars. And from talking to the school districts and the county, one of the things we really heard is that that the agencies don't want to be the landlord. And so the, the JPA would continue to serve as the landlord. It would do an RFP for a property management firm. And certainly, schools could be part of that effort to select a property management firm to make sure that we have the best firm working for us. Next slide, please. So participating agencies in return for serving as the guarantor would have dedicated housing for up to the next forty years, would be able to enhance their recruitment and retention efforts, have access to their employees for, for rates that are about thirty percent below market. The, we've done a rental study that has shown that there would be an annual demand of about three-hundred-and-thirty employees from our agency base each year. And the rents that we would be charging would be about thirty percent of below market for roughly a thousand dollars a month less than what the market would be. And then the school districts can really, could size the number of units they want based on their, their desire. The, the one example, Novato has a much more ambitious goal to build two-hundred units of workforce housing. They are securing twenty-seven units with the idea that they're gonna build additional units to address that demand. Next slide, please. So this is just an example of the allocation of the nine-unit blocks for the school district. So one of the things, because we've received grant that have, grants that have certain requirements on affordability, we have a mix of, of units that want, most of our units are one-bedrooms. So about two-thirds of our units are one-bedrooms. But among those one-bedrooms, we have fifty, sixty, and eighty percent AMI units. And I'll share a slide that will speak to the rent levels for that. And then our two bedrooms and three bedrooms are at eighty percent AMI. And so if San Rafael, in the example of San Rafael, looking at thirty-six units, you would just multiply each of those categories by four and that would give you the, an idea of the breakup, when you break out of your units. So this speaks to those units, what, what the income levels would be for those units as well as what the estimated rents are. So, so among the one-bedrooms, our rents would range from seventeen-hundred to twenty-eight-hundred and it would cover incomes of up to a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Those units that are limited to fifty percent AMI would be for incomes up to seventy-eight thousand. And then on the two and three bedrooms, it's incomes up to eighty-one thousand and up to fifteen, a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. And with those rent levels right there, you know, the other thing is for a two-bedroom, you could have two young professional teachers sharing a two-bedroom so that that would be affordable than maybe having a one-bedroom at eighty percent, for instance. And so we're trying to give as many options to address that target population as possible. So the school involvement, as I said, you know, we understand that schools don't want to be landlords for your employees. So probably the biggest involvement that we're asking from the schools is really to partner with us to reach out to your employees so that. So that we're getting applications for the units. So that we can be in a position where we have a high level of demand for the units and have waiting lists for these. So that we avoid any kind of obligations from the schools. If we do have multiple employees that are eligible, we select based on a lottery. This guarantor program would have schools backstopping shortfalls in revenue. If that would occur, our agency would work to make sure that in the following year, we have a balanced budget that doesn't rely on the revenue from school districts. And we have some strategies to do that and share that in the next slide. And then if school district circumstances change, they may transfer that obligation to another agency or the county. On an ongoing basis, as long as there's a mutual legal agreement to do so. So so like, for instance, the county may be interested in in additional units because right now they only have thirty four. If a school wanted to give up those units, the county, the county could step in and take over those units and that guarantor obligation going forward. So one of the biggest things we've been talking to schools over the last four months was around risk mitigation. And and as I said, we've really tried to look at. Those success stories and less than successful stories that help inform it. So I think one of the biggest things that would risk, would mitigate risk would be having affordable units. The experience in Marin is when we have units that are below eighty percent, there's a waiting list for those units. And so I think that would be the biggest risk mitigation. But in addition to that, we'd want to do a really aggressive pre-leasing strategy. Because like I said, there's going to be a demand of three hundred at the beginning and then every year. So really, our challenge is to fill the units at the beginning because over time, that normal attrition, there will be multiple people for those slots. We really want to work on that effort to fill the units at the front end. And to do so, we would want to reach out to people before the facility is even open. Making sure that we have people that are waiting in the queue to serve in that role. We have a budgeted vacancy rate at four percent. That aligns to the 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 market rate vacancy rate for market rate units in Marin. Again, our experience has been for below market rate units, the vacancy rate is lower. In addition to that, the JP has created a vacancy reserve that would serve as the initial draw for any shortfall. With the idea that then the schools would have time to then replenish that the subsequent year. And then I think one of the biggest risk mitigations is being part of a much bigger pool. So we're looking, you know, the pool of the County of Marin, the College of Marin, all the school districts, there's over six thousand employees. And so if, for whatever reasons, one agency is having trouble filling their units. Our hope and expectation is there will be people on the waiting list from the other agencies. And so those could, they could fill those slots on a temporary basis. And then legally, it's good to know that we could fill these units with any employee that fits those income requirements. So we could go out to cities and towns, Dominican childcare facilities, special districts and offer those units. We haven't really promoted that because we don't expect to be in that situation. But it's good to know that that that's always an option to mitigate risk going forward. Next slide. So another way of, this is what auditors would refer to as a contingency liability. So the idea is you don't have to spend it unless it occurs, right? So typically, this would be something that would be a footnote in your financials, saying that you have this contingency liability. The other discussion is, well, what's the risk of that liability? And so one way of looking at it is a vacancy rate sensitivity analysis. And so what we did here was take your, you know, the number of thirty six units and looked at what the exposure would be. So if your vacancy rate was four percent or under, your exposure is zero. If, for whatever reason, the vacancy rate was twice the market rate average of eight percent, then your exposure would be fifty six thousand. One example that you you hear a lot about is Sonoma State, which is market rate units, really not the fifty to eighty percent. They have a nine percent vacancy rate. If our, if our units were nine percent, your exposure would be about, you know, just over sixty thousand dollars. So this is give you some sense of the scope of the of the exposure that you're taking. And I think also you might want to look at that as the cost of turnover and and what you experienced recruiting for teachers and. And substituting when they're not there and or when they leave, those kind of things. Next slide, please. So we understand there's a lot to keep working through and figure out this, that's why we're doing this two step process. And so the first step that we're asking you to take tonight is, conceptually, do you want to participate? And how many units do you want to participate in? We need to do that so then we can build a financing plan around that assumption. And so if you take that step tonight, we will then work on refining the the budget plan, seeking the additional funding to close the budget gap. I did want to mention that the County of Marin is going to be paying their financial advisor to do a peer review of our work. And they have said they would share that with all the agencies. And so that's something that can happen between step one and step two. We will continue to work with your legal team to finalize what those final agreements would look like. And then only if we have a balanced budget, would we come back to you to take that next step. And I know that there have been some concerns about, well, what's the timeline? And unfortunately, we can't give you a specific timeline because we would only recommend going forward if we have a well thought out balanced budget. But right now, we're thinking the earliest that would be would probably be the end of May, early June. Because we are currently getting bids from our construction firms that would come back to us in in early May. We are hearing about potential grant funding sometime in June. So I think at the earliest, we're talking June. And then we recognize that you'll need a number, you know, a number of weeks to go over the proposed budget plan. So that you're vetting it before you come back and make that final decision. So with that, I will overview, I'm happy to answer questions and like I said, I have my. More specific questions you may have.
Thank you, Matthew. And I'm just going to clarify for my colleagues because it has been a long night that, and I'm going to ask the superintendent to clarify. Tonight, we are only committed to enter into a discussion. Can you say that a little?
So we're, the board is.
I just want everyone to be reminded of what we're talking about.
The board is being asked to decide whether to adopt the resolution directing district staff to the floor negotiating a mutually agreeable guarantee agreement. And if so, how many units does the board wish to have allocated San Rafael City Schools? Currently, our allocation is thirty six units. However, the district can elect any number of units between nine and thirty six. The MCPFA requests the district make the decision when it adopts the resolution. And for informational purposes, we have our attorney, Nazal Grand, sitting with us, who's been working with Matt Gilvin, Ken and and their team, Jessica Johnson. So that's what the board is being asked to do tonight. Just asking if you want to just move forward and do step one.
So just remember, it's just step one because I think some of the conversations are, you know, are we moving a hundred percent forward? We're, if you look back on his presentation is.
But to be clear, it's momentum towards.
Well, yes, it is.
I mean, it's, they're building their financial model based on us saying yes.
And we can say no.
You can say no, you can say twenty seven, you can say, and I do want to share that between April second and April fifteenth of twenty twenty five. We sent out a survey to our staff and we had three hundred and thirty respondents out of seven hundred and twenty employees. Over fifty percent, fifty point six percent of these respondents indicated they were interested or very interested in below market rate rental housing if it was made available to them. Nine percent of respondents were neutral regarding their interest level and many had additional questions. The remaining forty one percent of the respondents were not very interested or at all interested. And some of these respondents that weren't interested did not make the AMI salary. Your owner home or qualified by settler. So that that is something, so out of the employees that reported interest or very interested, forty two percent are tenured teachers. Seventeen are temporary probationary teachers or certificated staff. Thirty five percent are classified staff, two are temporary or probationary classified staff. And actually, four percent are administrators and management.
I just wanted you to share those data points. And now with that, I would like for the board to see if, thank you for your presentation. I didn't even thank you, I just thank you for being here. Trustees, what would you like to discuss? And then just FYI, when we go to open comment, we're going to go to Zoom first, okay? When we go to.
Okay, good call.
Trustee, and I don't, if you are ready to speak, go for it. If you're not, I'm not going to go in order today, so yeah.
Just have a question for clarification for process because a lot, it's been a long night and and for the public. So if we were to move forward with the adopting this resolution, this is to enable us to be able to enter into a conversation. Between our district staff and your team and, you know. But when it comes back to us, there is still going to be a process for us to just the discuss. And if we want to even continue to opt in or not, in that process, I just want to make sure that those steps are clear.
Yeah, I would just briefly say, you know, it is not, you're not binding yourself tonight. I think it's kind of like a good faith effort to work with us to see if we can come up with a financing plan that you would then be comfortable signing in on efficiently.
Like to say things out loud, right?
So my question is, the top, the housing projects that haven't been as successful are, is because they're above the market. They're at the market rate and not at this AMI index that this project is planning to set.
Yes, you know, so looking at the Serenity Project, I think they're offering one hundred and twenty percent AMI units. The Sonoma State project that was mentioned is at market rate levels. The, there is a school district down in the South Bay where they were offering one hundred and twenty percent levels. And so when it's one hundred and twenty percent, it's much closer to market. And so then there's decisions that people make about commuting versus not commuting. But when it's, you know, thirty percent below market, you know, people find that a lot more compelling. And so our experience in Marin has been if you offer units that are, you know, below eighty percent, you have excess demand.
And is there, have you got, I'm sorry, have you explored other ways to fill the finance gap outside of reaching out? Like, why isn't, why can't we get the rest of the bonds at the rate that we want? And has the developer, for instance, offered any opportunity to fill that gap?
Yeah, so the developer is deferring a million dollars of of his fee to help to to reduce the gap. We, of course, have, are trying to explore whatever. And, you know, one of the things I've shared with the county around their their peer review is, if you have better ideas to achieve the same goals, we're more than open to it. As I, as I was saying earlier, I think what's so challenging is ten million dollars is a lot. And so the way I view it is, if we would not have the guarantee, we would be paying the bond community ten million dollars. And in return, we would have to raise rents four hundred dollars a unit. And so rather than do that, because we have absolutely no, you know, intention, desire, you know, to default. Rather than giving the bond community that ten million dollars, we would much prefer reducing rents for the employees. And that helping to achieve our goal of charging affordable rents. And so that's what makes it so compelling. Between step one and step two, if we can find an alternative source that doesn't require the guarantor program and still allows us to achieve a balanced budget, we are more than open to that.
But that, that's just a couple of months, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, if you know a donor that's willing to give fifteen million dollars.
You found him.
I am ready to meet him.
A bond raised, but then too much, I'm not going to be able to have an election. Because it would be miniscule if it was a bond, then it was, that was, that was raised in terms of the amount that it would impact someone's property.
It would take a little long lead up time. And actually, we've done, you know, when I was with the county, we've done polling and it's very hard to get two thirds for affordable housing in Marin, even with workforce housing. Unfortunately, yeah.
And you're in conversations with foundations currently, you share that.
Yes.
Because I, I mean, I don't want to speak for the board, but I know that we are very pro housing. We think about our teachers and also longevity of them being in our school district and also recruiting. Not only just from the Bay, from other places. And I think I just, with the climate we're in, you know, it it's a little scary and I will just be honest with that. But but I I think I will speak for myself. I think thinking about being in conversation, knowing that we have the opportunity to step away. And I think, I think I'm, I'm just sharing that I I'm feeling okay with that, but I'm speaking for myself. So anyone want to share how they're thinking or?
Matthew, I know we we did talk and and I think we, there's lots of people who share with us, you know, for the media and and to our board. And my understanding is there's, obviously, I share the concern with, you know, first of all, our, our reserve. That we still try to meet, you know, the ideal reserve target. We know that the COVID money is going away and then we have to close some funding gap. And with the, also with the new administration, so there's a lot of added uncertainty. Looking at the the stock market today is is another example. These uncertainty will mean to us as as investor or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Using the, using the the revenue to fund the school.
Yeah.
And and I know that we we also talk about the poverty tax, you know, the recessions. And whether it's school district should be responsible, should be, you know, participate in in building housing to begin with. But I also look at the population that just came out from Berkeley, City Lab and UCLA. We talked about some of the nine of the eleven workforce teacher causing project. They didn't go, they didn't cover the all, the all, the all, the eleven one, they they covered the nine examples. And it seems very successful. How how does this particular project measure with those nine successful project? Can you?
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to earlier. I mean, first, getting back to your first point about uncertainty, that's why we can't tell you exactly when we'll come back with a balanced budget. Because we don't control interest rates, we don't control tariffs, we, you know, we don't control a number of things. And so we would only come back and recommend our board and the board of the five participating agencies to go forward. If we thought we had a a really well thought out plan of that, it would make sense. So that's one thing. On the, looking at what has been successful, like I said, we tried to learn from both successes and from, you know, less than successful projects. And inevitably, the successful projects really get to around affordability, some are at sixty percent AMI, some of it are are eighty percent AMI. All of them were below eighty percent AMI that I saw. So that really reinforces what our goal seeks to stay within that fifty to eighty percent range. And that's really, you know, what the JPA has really decided. Because, like I said, you could increase those rates, but if you increase the rate, you lose the mission of what you're trying to accomplish. Which is address that target population of, you know, low and moderate income employees, beginning teachers, those kind of folks. So I do feel like that, that's the biggest lesson learned. The other thing is free land is a really a best practice around, you know, schools donating their land. In this case, the state's donating their land essentially a dollar a year for ninety nine years. So those are the two things that really step out of, step, you know, come out of reviewing successful projects.
So trustees, I am going to open it to public comments so we can hear and then we can, so then we can discuss. Okay, so we're going to go to Zoom first.
Yeah, and so I'm going to start with.
And to. Time, we're two minutes.
Okay, so we actually have five hands online.
Thank you.
I'm going to start with just a Linda, not Linda Common, Linda, you're next. And I'm going to let, start with Linda. Linda, you are on.
Okay, thank you so much, President Martin.
Love Linda.
Trustees and Superintendent Guy South, so great to see you all. I was a city planner in San Rafael for twenty two years, working on housing plans. And I was on the school. And I was on the school board for 17 years. Budgets every year, every year, folks, the budget is a challenge with ups and downs. And I would just say, listening into this meeting has been a wonderful thrill to see all the programs that we were starting on coming to fruition. And that is what I think is the greatest part of being on a school board, is being able to see things happen. I also knew people who lived in affordable housing in Marin County. And I can speak to the peace of mind that they had, living in a home that was affordable to them and not having to worry about where they were going, if they were going to be priced out of Marin. About 10 years ago, with the HR department, I did a survey of where our employees were living at that time. And it was astounding to see particularly for CSEA employees, no names, no names, just zip codes, how many of them were living outside of Marin County? Meaning they were commuting to their jobs in San Rafael schools, an hour every day each way. And I'm excited to see the survey that the superintendent shared. About half of the employees responding were saying, yes, I would like to have an affordable place to live. You know, this, the seed for this project was planted six years ago in 2019. And the project's been on a fast track for the last four years. That's a demonstration of how hard it is to build affordable housing.
All right, time's up. Thank you so much for your comments, but due to time, we are going to keep going. We appreciate that. Next is Linda.
Thank you, Linda, for being here. So great to hear your voice.
Next is Linda Halman. Linda, you are.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much for being here tonight. My name is Linda Halman. I'm a 30-year resident of San Rafael. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Marin, and I am a leader with the Marin Organizing Committee. My husband and I chose to live in Marin so that our children could get a great public education. And now they are successful young adults. Their education was great because they had excellent teachers. We need more affordable housing so our teachers and other staff can live in the place where they work and they don't have to sit in traffic and commute long hours. Excellent teachers provide the outstanding education that Marin prides itself on. And this has a domino effect on attracting families to Marin and thus maintains our reputation as a wonderful place for families to thrive. And here are the positive points for approving and moving ahead with this guarantor plan. One, the land for the project is state owned and is provided for essentially free for development. Two, the risk of the guarantee is shared across several entities so that no one district is taking on the potential of empty units. Three, other projects across the state of California have been successful at providing affordable housing to teachers. And four, the cost benefit analysis points to a net positive when you weigh in the cost of teacher retention and attraction of new teachers. Please vote to move forward and consider all 36 units. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Linda. Good time and that's great. So we are going to, we're going to move on to Joanna Julian. Joanna Julian, you are online.
Good evening, board members. My name is Joanna Julian. I'm with Education Housing Partners, the developer of the Oak Hill Workforce Housing Project. And I appreciate the opportunity to offer a few comments for some additional context. So we've been developing and advising dozens of school districts on employee housing projects for decades. And in our experience, one of the most common barriers to employee housing projects actually moving forward is that districts were not able to come up with the financing to fund the development on their own. So that includes funding and undertaking site due diligence, design, entitlement, SEQA review, permitting, all of which takes years and great expense before ultimately even getting to start the construction of the project. And in this case, what's being brought before you is a project that has already completed design. It's already completed entitlement and SEQA permitting is in progress and will soon be ready to begin construction pending a balanced budget. So this guarantor program being considered is in and of itself a pretty powerful risk mitigation strategy that would give the district access to affordable housing for its employees. But compared to undertaking a project independently, as many other districts have done, it allows you to do so at a greatly reduced level of risk and expense. And as you well know, being able to provide this housing, it benefits the employees themselves. It benefits the students by having continuity and experienced staff, benefits the district operationally. So I'll end there. Lastly, we'd like to thank the board for its thoughtful consideration of this program. And I'll defer to our team in the room to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Joanna, almost on the, on the spot there. That's great. All right, next up, we have Fabiola Gutierrez. Fabiola, you are.
Hi, good evening, board members. My name is Fabiola. I'm a school psychologist at the Jefferson Union High School District. And I actually live in the employee, employee housing complex. And I just want to speak to what a blessing it is to work and live in this district and how amazing it is to be able to afford housing and go to my job day after day and not be stressed about the housing cost or the commute. I'm a very strong supporter of these projects. And I would say, as much as I love working at the school that I work at, the biggest recruitment and retention tool was the ability to be in this housing unit. I know that some people might think, you know, besides the financial, some people might think it's awkward to live with colleagues. But I think if anything, it's not awkward, it's a blessing and it's also a way for us to build community. And I, I'm just going to speak for the rest of my colleagues that live here. We all have very positive things to say. And I think everyone is just super blessed and super appreciative of being able to live close to work, being able to live in our community and just keep coming back year after year without having to worry about the cost of rent as it's always rising. In San Mateo County, it's very expensive to live here. But having this housing unit allows us to work in the communities that we love and also, you know, keep supporting the students that we support year after year. So I strongly support a project such as this one. And I just, you know, based on my experience, it has been nothing short of a blessing. And I love living and working in this district. But I will say that it is a lot easier to work here when you have secure housing that's nice, affordable and close to your job. So that is my experience as somebody living in the employee complex. And I hope that you all support this project as well.
Great, thank you so much, Fabiola. All right, we have one more online. We have Nancy McCarthy, Nancy McCarthy, you are welcome to speak.
Good evening, board members, I'm Nancy McCarthy. I'm a member of the Board of Marin County Office of Education. And I'm very concerned about this project, not because of the fact that it provides workforce housing, which I think is a great idea, but because I do not think the schools should risk the financial loss that's associated with this possibility. Right now, as of April 24th, all the schools in Marin are subject to losing all their federal funding if they don't agree to recertification by the universe, by the Secretary of Education. That's 10% of the funding. We are facing a situation where money is not available. Marin County Office of Education has been deficit spending for the last three years. I don't know how anybody will make up the gap if the numbers that are being proposed are not the right numbers. And I do not believe, based on the math that I've seen, is, is an indication that that will be the loss or potential losses. I think that they need to go back to the drawing board and seek grants. I have not seen any requests for grants that have been refused from some of the bigger organizations like Lucas Educational Foundation, like Marin Community Foundation. And I really do believe that those organizations, like they do in Silicon Valley, would be happy potentially to put forth some of these funds so that the schools don't have to be on the hook because they can't raise money like the Board of Supervisors or others can. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you so much. All right, and that is all we have online. Now we can open, we'll choose whoever else.
Okay, that's it? All right, so we're in the room. All right, thank you so much for people on Zoom and joining us this evening and, and being with us. Okay, first up, I have my wonderful neighbor. And congratulations on your soon to be senior graduating and excited about her journey ahead. Caroline Jensen, can you please join us, please?
Oh, you stole my opener.
I'm just so proud of her.
I am too. Good evening, board. Just want to acknowledge, it's late. I'm usually on the sofa asleep. By now, I'm trying to get through White Lotus, but here we are. Seeing some familiar faces, so it's really wonderful to be here. It's been a while since I've been here. A little bit about who I am. I'm a 21-year resident of San Rafael, a mother of two. My kids came up through San Rafael City Schools, Glenwood, the wonderful Davidson and San Rafael High School. My daughter is a senior. She just accepted UC Berkeley with, I think, seven other.
Yeah.
From San Rafael High School, like, this is insane. So we are so proud to be in San Rafael and members of the public schools. They work, we know that they work because of our teachers, because of our volunteers, because of our administrators and staff. We are having some difficult conversations looking ahead. We're thinking about housing, her second year, you know, after dorm life. What is that going to look like? How are we going to afford housing for a college student? When she graduates, is she going to have a degree that's going to afford her the luxury of coming back to Marin County? You know, students are making choices on their secondary education, perhaps not based on their strengths. I mean, hopefully, it's based on their strengths, right? But it's also about where they're going to be able to earn a living. For me personally, affordable housing is dear to my heart. I've been working for the Marin Community Foundation for 21 years, but in the area of affordable housing for about nine years. And the reason that I do this work is I was raised by a single parent. When you have one income, it's very tough. We're doing all we can with our donors to raise and to close the gap. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Caroline. Congrats again. Okay, and next we have, is it Mary Stumpf? Did I say that last name right?
You did.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I have been an executive director of PEP Housing, building and managing affordable senior housing for nearly two decades. I support affordable housing and building this project. What I don't support is the financing mechanism. I'm a CPA. This is a risky financing mechanism. It's not been done before. The proposed model is to divert critical school funding to cover potential financial losses. The request for schools to cover any vacancies over 4% threshold could impose a lasting financial liability for the next 40 years on this school district. A major issue is the refusal of this JPA to share their financial pro forma. I always had to do that until they achieve a balanced budget, even after public records requests. How can you semi-commit to a project where you haven't seen the numbers? By the way, there was a discussion about Serenity previously and Marina Crossing. You were told by Mr. Heimel that it was a 9% vacancy rate. It's a 20% vacancy rate currently. Read the Press Democrat article. Also, there is less than 20% of the units are occupied by Sonoma State University staffs. Your school district might end up subsidizing the public to fill these units, as is Sonoma State University. More than half the proposed units, as you saw, are targeted at households earning 80 to 120% of area median income. That's the same area median income that Mr. Heimel says will bring rents closer to AMI. Most of those units are 80 to 120% of AMI. This project places undue pressure on educational budgets, which should instead be focusing on student learning and services. I urge you to pause further participation until you see a pro forma and make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Okay, Stephanie Andre? Yes, thank you.
Stephanie Andre, Lursser City Council member. I am going to say that your school district funds should be used to educate our children, not to backstop rents at this project. You are not being given enough information to evaluate this project. There's been no pro formas, you have no idea what the financing structure actually is. At Serenity, everybody wants below market rents. But given the capital structure, the debt costs and the interest expense, they are not able to offer lower rents. Therefore, the property is only 90% occupied. You be careful when they talk about, you know, there's plenty of demand for affordable housing. Serenity is 90% occupied and only 59% leased to middle income renters. If you look at the 14 properties across Serenity's portfolio, only one has a vacancy rate of 4%. So everybody else is 75% to 90% occupied. Don't assume that just because someone filled out a survey that they are going to rent from you. Second, thirdly, capex, no one's talked about capex. Real estate, you need capex. We have vacant units at Serenity that have mold issues, water intrusion issues and others. So are you going to be backstopping rents on a vacant unit that they can't rent because they don't have money to fix mold or termite or other issues? And lastly, ask yourselves, a rent guarantee, you are paying for vacant units. Does that really help any employee? There's no one living in this unit. The better way to solve this issue is to actually provide rent subsidies to your employees or raise their income so that they can actually rent these properties. Don't provide the rent guarantee because it really puts this stress on your, on your, on your budget for the next 40 years. And you're really just paying for vacant units where no one is living in these units. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Okay, Pat Langley?
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, thank you all for listening to this presentation. And my name is Pat Langley. I'm a member of the Marin Organizing Committee. I'm also the proud mother-in-law of a longtime San Rafael school teacher. She spent most of her career at Bahia Vista and is currently teaching at Sun Valley School. So I have spent many, an hour with her and her friends, listening to the plights of school teachers. I am firmly in support of this project. And the other day, I was talking with a friend who is teaching in the Daly City School District. They, their elementary school district put up housing, 56 units, and it was immediately filled. So it started last year, September, and filled with teachers, no vacancy rate. And that's what I would look forward to here. The second thing that I think of is that a few years ago, there were fires in San, in Sonoma County. And Marin schools had to close their schools, not because of the terrible air quality, but because there were not enough teachers who could come down to Marin and fill in as substitutes. And wouldn't those teachers much rather live if they could afford it here in Marin rather than traveling? Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. All right, Gail, Gail? Hi, did I say your last name right?
It's Natale.
Yes, thank you, hi.
Gail Natale, 25-year resident with Tara Linda and my daughter. She got a certificate of completion from San Rafael High. She is intellectually disabled. And if you think it's challenging to find housing as an average person, just try to find housing if you can't even get a job. So I think you all know that. So I am a retired architect and climate activist, a climate action specialist, actually, climate adaptation. I'm also on the board of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. And we urge you to take the next steps on this project. Absolutely, you should get more information, but it sounds like that's what's being promised to you. In the past year, I and members of the MEK, Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative Board, our interns and our staff have talked to over 2,000 people in tabling events in this county, most of whom feel that affordable housing is one of our biggest issues. And definitely, we know more than ever that educating our students is important for not only our city and our county, but our country. The value of a good education and a person who actually is using that education has never been clearer in our lives. And we need teachers to be able to focus on that and we need teachers to feel valued. You know, we're in a brave new world of funding challenges. We can't afford to leave any stone unturned in looking at options to help educate our children, help their, their teachers thrive. And, you know, San Rafael, California, we've often led the way. There's just one more way, you know, we just have to be brave and take that step. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Anne Levinson?
Me again. Hi, guys. Again, didn't come for this topic tonight, but I love speaking, apparently. I want to start by just saying I really appreciate that I am on this side of the podium this evening because this does not seem like the most clear-cut decision. But I felt like I needed to voice because Dr. Lau, you actually asked a really great question. I think when you said, should school districts be involved in providing and guaranteeing teacher housing? Maybe not, but the rest of our community hasn't done that. They have not provided enough affordable housing for our community. We have a housing need, and so it might be something that our district needs to fill that gap for our students or for our teachers. I will admit, I'm not an expert in affordable housing projects. Listening to some of the comments tonight, there have been some pretty good logical questions that have been raised, which I, if tonight was a decision to yes, definitively go forward, we are signing a contract that we cannot get out of, I would have paused. Given that this is a good-faith argument to continue going forward and learn more information before we have to actually sign a firm commitment, I would say we should go forward. But again, I'm glad I'm on this side, so thank you very much.
Thank you for staying and joining us. It's so fun. Okay, now we have Bruce. Bruce? Dorfman? Okay, so you wrote your letter so close that I'm...
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. I don't want to make a mistake.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Dorfman with Education Housing Partners. Since we built the very successful Casa del Maestro Apartments for Santa Clara Unified, about 25 years ago, we've been on the forefront of developing workforce housing for school districts throughout the state of California to help them recruit and retain employees. Ironically, one place we haven't succeeded in creating teacher-staff housing is in our home of Marin County. Although it's not without trying, as we have worked with about half the districts, including yours, on creating workforce housing. Should be noted that what is being proposed tonight is not a wild and crazy idea, nor is it particularly novel. The state has passed legislation encouraging school districts to build employee housing. And the state superintendent of schools has held events to bring attention to this opportunity. In fact, there are over 1,000 units of housing that have been built by public school districts, and there are several thousands more apartments that are in various stages of construction and planning throughout the state. And these districts share a common reality with you. You are all looking to hire from a limited pool of quality candidates for potential employees. The unique elements of this proposal are, one, because Marin districts are small, Oak Hill was set up to be a commingled effort in which numerous districts could participate. And, two, the heavy lifting to develop this housing will be completed. No one is asking this district or any other district to take the pre-development, financing, or construction risk. The only risk relates to renting units at below-market rental rates. And if you can't fill them, I'm sure other districts will. As mentioned, I spoke to your district about creating workforce housing several times in the past two decades. Superintendent Alverena?
Yeah, we are. Two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have Hartson Anderson.
I will try to be brief. I'm reading a letter from Kevin Savada that he wrote to the Marin Board of Supervisors. My name is Kevin Savada. I'm a Marin County resident and trustee of the Town High School District. I'm also a professional real estate investor, including spending a decade leading acquisitions for Morgan Stanley's wealth management. I do not speak on behalf of our district, as the Town District has already turned down the request to participate in this program. I'm speaking as a taxpayer, payer, and somebody that has real estate investment experience to understand what the district is actually being asked to take on. I'm a supporter of this project. We need more housing in Marin, et cetera. I've been discussing this project with the developers for years, and I hope it eventually will be successful. I am opposed to the request being made of school districts to sign up for an income guarantee. It is entirely inappropriate for a board to put their general fund at risk for this kind of non-school-related purposes. I'm familiar with the details of this program and how it's being proposed to the schools. And the idea that would be no cost is just an asterisk on the financial statements. This is false. It is virtually certain that this income guarantee will be triggered during the next 40 years of life of these bonds. And so, the impact connected to the district, the auditor for the district, Kristy White, and they confirmed that this kind of arrangement would have several negative consequences impacting the district's ability to issue long-term bonds, affecting reserve levels, and even requiring notes about proper board governance. As for the process and the way to pitch the school districts, the targets do not have the experience to understand what they are being asked to take on.
Thank you, sir. And if you want to give us the letter, we can take it and add it to the minutes and the notes if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you to anyone else who wants to come.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, Jenny Silva?
Hi, and thank you for having us tonight. I'm Jenny Silva, and I'm the executive director of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. And we are a big supporter of this project, and I urge you to take this next step forward to consider it. As has been mentioned, you are not making any financial obligation tonight. This is not going to the altar. It's just wiping right to see if you're entrusted. This is not something that... Many school districts throughout California are taking on great financial risk to provide housing for their teachers because it is a problem that all of California is facing right now. The risk that you're taking on with this project is far less than if you were to do the development of yourself. There's been a lot of discussion of diverting funds from education. There is no funds being spent if the apartments are leased. And if these are below-market rentals, the likelihood of them being leased is very, very high. And you have a lot of time to verify that for yourself and not just take my word for it or anybody else's. And then I just want to mention, there are significant costs and risks to the district if this project does not go through. The housing prices is presenting great challenges to Marin schools. 43% of Marin school staffers cannot afford any sort of housing in Marin County, period. Nevada Unified has reported that their turnover has increased from 3% to 14% in an 11-year period. Every teacher costs $25,000 to replace. When you look at teachers between the ages of 25 and 35, 34, most stay for one and a half years. So, this is a couple of recruiting costs and retention that you're paying over and over again. I think when you do the financial modeling on this and you really look at it, this is going to reduce your operating costs. It is going to take money out of your budget. So, please move it forward. Get the rest of the info. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, Matt Sampson. And then, and this is my last blue one, so if you have last-minute things.
Good evening, President Markeen and trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I think in Marin, you have to lead with how many years you've lived here to establish relevance. So, 36-year resident of San Rafael, son of a woman who substituted in this district for over 20 years, currently married to a substitute teacher who substituted us last week, and then also was able to teach PE both at Bahia Vista and Laurel Dell as part of your YMCA program. I'm also incredibly pro housing. We have a big issue that's been highlighted over and over and over again. It's a terrible and a high graduate. I see firsthand that many of my friends could not afford to come back to Marin. A little bit of a separate issue, but tangentially connected in my professional life. Wear two hats in both of those efforts. I struggle to retain and recruit good people to our organizations. It's tough. The price of housing is way too high. And I thought that the state's arena efforts would solve that problem. But through a variety of issues, whether it's local pushback, whether it's the financial markets changing so that developers don't have the same financial interest or benefit to develop housing, it's not being solved. So, when the Oak Hill project hopped on, I got very interested because this is something we've been trying over and over again. It's also the same time. I'm very glad folks from Jefferson Unified School District have commented tonight because that project popped up. But there's differences, and it's not just nuanced. And this is where I'm against the current moving forward with this project. I think it's valid. I think we need this. But if we are leading with recruitment and retention on 36 units that you're locking up for a long time, you're solving a temporary problem. You're not looking at long-term. Jefferson Unified financed their project to a $30 million bond, you know, election. They also have significant property on their lot, which they plan to rent out for commercial revenue to not only subsidize the project, but also boost teacher salary. They're also $2,600 a month for a three-bedroom unit, and you can only live there for five years. It's meant to bring people in. It's meant to get them on their feet, meant to build up a little bit of stuff and then go forward. So, I urge you to look at that if you're going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have Minnie Willard.
Good evening. The JPA's goal is to get you to sign tonight. In fact, you're already being pressed tonight in that you're told that if you don't say yes tonight, everybody else, the rates will go, the interest rates will go up. So, you're being pushed to make a monumental decision on a flimsy, largely fact-free presentation that has none of the key numbers that you need to make an informed decision. Undoubtedly, they have these numbers. I can't imagine that the county and Marin Community Foundation and the bond consultants are moving forward without those numbers, but you aren't getting them. So, challenge them to prove that they can pay bonds at rents that are targeting 50% to 80% AMI. You aren't getting any proof of that. You're being simply told there's lots of demand for affordable housing, and that if rents are at $3,000 per month, the place will fill up and you'll have little risk. But there's a really very real possibility they'll need higher rents to pay the bondholders. And that's the most important thing that has to happen. Recall my earlier comments about the economic backdrop. So, there's a very large possibility. Remember, 2/3 of all the units are not at 80% of AMI. They're at 80% to 120% AMI. And if need be, that's what they're going to have to do, is raise the rents. You become financially responsible for vacant expensive apartments. But don't worry about any of that, you're told. You'll get real numbers later. In fact, they'll offer to vet them for you. They choose and direct the consultant. It's your fiduciary responsibility to engage your own experts to assess the demand for Oak Hill units by your employees.
Thank you. We'll take your comments, and we'll put them in the notes. Thank you. Okay, so there is, yes. Our superintendent's not feeling well today, so I'm thankful she's still here. Okay, so, forward.
I have, I want to propose a motion to lower the SRCS amount of units from 36 to 27.
Oh, can we do our discussion first before we do a motion? Some of us haven't been able to ask follow-up questions. I just, because I have some follow-up questions or comments.
Yes, yes, go for it.
Sorry, trustee wrote us.
No, go ahead.
You have the Tim Ryan spirit. I wish he was here. He would have laughed at my joke. First and foremost, I mean, I just want to thank the public and our staff for comments prior to this meeting tonight, online, in person, continuing. I'm pretty sure my inbox, our inboxes are filling up. I encourage folks to keep sharing your thoughts in this process. I personally want to just share something like personal. I have experienced housing instability here in Marin County. And I, even with a college degree, you find yourself in a space where you have to make a different type of choice. I was copsurfing for six months, and I lived out of my car right here in Marin, not very long ago, probably about less than 15 years ago. And I share this, this personal note because this is a very challenging and difficult decision, even though we're talking about a resolution. And I want to say that I thank everyone who has made these comments because it's something very personal to me, and we speak to our values. That's why I wanted to share this, something that's very personal to me. I fully support workforce housing. I fully support affordable housing. I'm currently a renter. I joke around that I got married for economic reasons. I don't know if I'll actually be able to own in this same community that I serve as an elected, but also in my job currently. I share all of this because I want to uplift that I do have concerns and questions about this project. I share the personal piece because I want to learn, lean in and learn more. But I want to elevate that it is our job as a governing team to ask questions. So, with that, I want to highlight some key pieces, and because this is an open conversation with all of us, is that I want to learn more about opportunities for us to consider an opt-out clause, if that is an option. I want to learn more about opportunities regarding if there's a time limit for those who rent in our properties and to make sure that folks have the timeline to be able to come into our housing structure and then be able to get, like, what the intended purpose of it is. I want to see a timeline and seeing what other neighboring examples are that trustee Lau had uplifted, some of the commenters had uplifted as well. I'm also a little concerned because, not concerned, sorry, that's not the word that I want to use. I want to note that Nevada Unified School District moved forward for the resolution for 27 units. And College of Marin moved forward with a resolution to lean in to learn more about 18 units. And I think that's really key because even though Nevada Unified School District and San Rafael City Schools are very comparable in size, we are not in an active engagement of creating our own workforce development housing project like Nevada Unified. We are more of in a similar situation like College of Marin where we don't have active workforce development housing project. So, I know that you've had the Tim Ryan spirit. But with these personal comments, I would love a consideration and discussion to actually lowering the units to something closer to 18, as more comparable to our position of College of Marin in this exploration process. Thank you, trustee, and any other comments?
How are we going to manage this in terms... Oh, go ahead.
I would just, I don't know if that is Matthew's question, or we can have counsel to answer. One of the things I want to confirm is being the guarantee of the unit is won't affect our bond rating, being part of the guarantee agreement. I remember reading the statement saying that it won't, but I just want to make sure that's the case, that participating in the guarantee won't affect our bond rating, at least current or in the near future.
So, that was confirmed to me by bond counsel, but I'm not bond counsel, so I have any color to that.
Another question is, I know that people are concerned about that we're committing the district to finance the teacher housing. One other question I want to ask is, you know, I know we are entertaining some surplus property of the district. I don't know. I understand there's Assembly Bill 4295 and also the Teacher Housing Act of 2016 that it may allow us to use the surplus property proceeds that when we do sell them. I'm wondering if we can use those proceeds to set up a reserve to help provide this guarantee so that it doesn't come out from our operating expenses or operating budget. But does this mechanism allow us to do that? Can we find out?
So, a year ago, the answer would have been yes across the board, but the provision that allows you to put the sale proceeds from property into your general fund sunset on July 1st, 2024. So, regarding sale proceeds, it's, we have to look into that further and explore some creative options or some ideas that I have possibly for sale proceeds. It has to be spent on capital outlay. That's a very broad definition of what that entails. The good news is that the properties that you have that have been surplus, the lease revenue, that can be 100%. The good news is that the properties that you have that have been surplus, the lease revenue, that can be a hundred percent contributed to our success. So there's a difference there and we'd have to explore. Obviously, the surplus sale would be bigger. So possibly.
Thank you.
I just wanted, we absolutely need more housing here and I want this project to be successful. I'm bringing this up because I really appreciate all the work and effort that's going into making this work and it is, it's a hard decision. The reason I'm bringing this up is I'm still currently, I don't want to move this forward because I don't want to put the schools on the hook for any risk at all. We're running on razor-thin budgets. We're not at our reserves levels that we need to be. And I just can't, at this point, see a path of, you know, predicting what's gonna happen for the next thirty years and that happening. Now, I'm one person saying that, but I just want to bring it up to make sure when I do vote or bring this up there. I'm absolutely in support of this project and actually I think you'll make it to the finish line somehow. I don't want to put the school on the hook for it. It is my opinion at this point.
I kind of want to add to that, you know, I do share your concern and I think that's why we have the topic here tonight. And a lot of us share those concern about how best to finance and close the funding gap. Including finding other revenue or private donation. I think one of the nine projects that was successful was supported by MATA. They provide a grant to support those projects. So I really want to encourage the joint authority to explore those options. I know MCF is here tonight, maybe they can help us to kind of explore some local businesses. Because this is also not just a housing, not just teacher, but is a workforce issue I think we had to solve. I always believe that if I'm not part of the solution, I'm part of the problem. I just want to look for a solution to kind of move things forward. I was at San Jose State when I learned about the purchase of the building and how excited everyone was. But there was some mistake made, but at the same time, I feel like we're not comparing necessarily apple to oranges. This San Jose State project is different in terms of how it's set up. This project is inside a share risk, is joined with other local district and county office as well. And I don't know, we can afford doing nothing. According to that report, the same report that I've been referencing, the housing solution doesn't happen overnight. We cannot solve that problem overnight. I think from the concept to the occupancy, it takes an average seven point five years. So it does take some foresight, it does take some planning to solve this problem. So the turnover going to another report could cost up to the district twenty-five thousand dollars per position. If those staff shortages being impacted and not be able to fill those positions. So we are not without cost by not doing anything. So I think that is, this is an important factor to consider. And I think housing disproportionately impact new teacher, younger new teacher who come out from the workforce. And also our classified employee. I think the classified employee also has relatively lower wages compared to our certificate employee. And the school cannot function without all our employees that being there. So I would like everyone to consider that is how we can better support, you know, our new teachers. Retirement is going to be coming up, you know, as we know, folks will retire, we have to replace, we could new teachers and we could talents. And then, you know, how we can actually solve that problem together and also support a classified staff, I think is important to consider as well.
Thank you, trustee Dr. Lau. Okay, so team, we still have eleven items to go, so I'm going to ask for a vote.
Yeah, can we deal with the number of units, like if they have different units that they want to do, we do that separately.
I think we do that separately. Right now, it's just we are voting to have the conversation. We're not negotiating anything else. So we are voting. I thought it was based, no, I thought it was based on the number of units in order for them to do their estimate.
So we need, so do we need to do that?
Perhaps the one way to do it would be a threshold question, do you want to participate? And then the second would be at what level?
Yeah, that's right.
There we go. Thank you.
Just to chime in, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be adopting a resolution, you're gonna make a motion to modify the.
We would.
Yeah, okay. So if I move the resolution, it's to modify.
Well, first you have to adopt it, but modify.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Do we, sorry, point of clarification with like an amendment with a modification. So I would like to make a motion to adopt, move forward with the resolution with an amendment with a modification of eighteen units for the exploration.
Do I have a second? Can I second? Or can I not second as a president?
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Can I have a discussion? Sorry.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna be here till eleven thirty.
No, 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 I understand.
Okay.
I just want to listen to the rationale of lower to the, to the, how many again?
So the rationale, sorry, is it, does that mean we just pause that for a second so I can address this question? Sorry, I'm all about like Robert's Rules of Order. So my reasoning behind the lowering the threshold to eighteen units for this exploratory phase is, again, this is not a commitment to eighteen units. It's an exploration for the number of eighteen units is because Nevada Unified School District is comparable in size to us. But they are in an active, like, what shall we call it, workforce development project. And they base their units according to, when I watched their school board meeting, that's how they came to that number. Whereas College Marin doesn't have an active workforce development housing project. So that was my reasoning of bringing it down to the number of eighteen units as comparable to College of Marin because we're both not in an active housing project, at least for this exploratory phase. And then on top of that, one thing I did want to note is it would be helpful that, it's great that we are, well, we, there is creative thinking and active grant writing and public-private funding opportunities. Would be wonderful if there was a mechanism to see that in update in real time of the list and a possible like dollars and to see, to encourage other folks who might be out there listening and watching that if they are with private donors and they feel really moved by the spirit, they'll reach out proactively.
What I want to say is I would support the lowering the number to eighteen, but I was thinking more about the twenty-seven just because I based on the survey that came back from the survey that we sent out. And based on the numbers from our new teachers, the teacher with younger tenure and also classified employee. I feel like twenty-seven is a better number, but I will, I will be fine with the.
I'm okay with twenty-seven. I just want, I just would like to see a lower number.
I think you want a conservative.
A conservative number.
What I'm hearing from trustee Danielle Marsh is she wants a conservative number and I think you're looking at the data. So I'm just highlighting what you're saying.
I'm happy to amend that, a friendly amendment. So can I redo my motion?
No, 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 that's fine. Conservative number is fine. I think if we can get better answer to our questions and better guarantee, we can always up that number, you know?
No.
No, because I'm gonna have to go find another eighteen units from another agency. So I think it would be.
Staff is recommending that you, A, approve the resolution and B, approve the modified number. That's what we're recommending tonight. So whether it's eighteen or twenty-seven, we need to know from staff, from the trustees, the board, what you would like to move forward with.
So I'm going to ask again. Can I have an approval of the motion to approve resolution two four two five dash five three?
Motion to approve that resolution with an amendment number of twenty-five?
Twenty-seven. It's gotta be.
Yeah, increment some nine.
And remember, we are not signing the dotted line. We are still able to. So I have a motion from trustee Rotis. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have second from.
On the number of twenty-seven units, correct?
Yes, I have a second from trustee Danielle Marsh. All in favor? Aye. Nays?
Nay.
Nay. So I would love to, you got that? Okay, great. So that motion passes. Okay, now we still have nine things to do.
However, in the spirit of time, staff has been looking at the agenda and we would like to push item number nine and ten to the May fifth board meetings.
Item nine and ten to the May fifth board meeting.
So we will cruise through items two and. Let me do that.
Thank you.
Staff will be diligent and.
Okay, and with that, okay, let's move to Stephanie.
We're gonna take a hard left.
And now we're empty again. Look at, just the three of us.
I can eat my sandwich. I'm gonna do a high-level overview. I'm gonna move quick. I'm gonna trust you will ask questions.
Yes.
If you need, I'm always available if you need more information, but yes, I'm gonna move this along.
Okay.
So we're gonna start with TK. We've done a lot of work on TK. We have believed in our district. It is a lever for equity and we've been really excited about the work. We've spent a lot of time thinking about our vision. And when TK first came out, what curriculum companies did is they took the TK stamp and put it on kindergarten. So we waited a couple of years and we're now in a space, next slide please, Kristi, where we think it's time to adopt a full, to adopt a curriculum. A few different purposes here. One is we know that next year is a full implementation, so we're expanding to sixteen classrooms. That's a lot of classrooms. We want to make sure that we're aligned. And we also have some experience now in what TK looks like in aligning with those learning foundations. So we believe we're ready to adopt a curriculum in line with the transitional kindergarten mission and vision we wrote last year as a group. The first thing we do in a curriculum adoption is write a rubric. This is always based on whatever standard we're teaching as well as if there's any mission or vision or input we might have from stakeholder groups. After that, we look at different curriculum options. Our office right now looks like a publisher warehouse as we've explored different curriculums for different things. And we first vet to see what aligns with the rubric we have written. After that, we think about, do we know that it meets the expectations we have here for our ELI programs? As well as any other spectral considerations. In this case, there was one curricula that met our rubric and we moved forward with that pilot, which was called Creative Curriculum. This is a comprehensive TK curriculum. It is a curriculum that is, has actually been used in the state of California at preschools. Again, remembering that preschools used to be three to five years old. And TK is now taking on that four-year-old age range. And so this really thinks about the whole child and again aligns with those preschool TK learning foundations that we adhere to in California. We piloted the percussion unit. It was a five-week unit. It was super cute and super fun. If you ever want to hear a bunch of TKers making music with all sorts of homemade items.
Does anyone have a headset?
Yes, the teachers. No. I'm sorry, I'm gonna do next slide. And so this unit has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight units. Things like percussion, light grocery store seeds, and also a unit getting ready for kindergarten. It's on display if you'd like to see it. Couple of things we really liked, it was really hands-on, it integrates across the curriculums. It's really asset-based and play-based, which actually is trustee Martine was talking about earlier, I work with Discovery Museum. One of the things we really loved is we know there's a second adult in all TK classrooms and this provided small group lessons for that second adult to do. Instead of the teacher having to design those, they're built into the curriculum, right? So it has small group lessons the teacher can do as well as the second adult. And it was really user-friendly. There was a lot of embedded professional development. Challenges, someone mentioned this earlier, the biggest challenge in education is time, time. And another is, you know, we have some other curriculum we've used with a lot of success that aligns to our K-five curriculum. So Hagerty is a phonemic awareness, things like beginning sounds, pulling apart words, putting words together, just the sounds of them. We need to make time for that because it aligns with our K-five curriculum. Second step is our social emotional curriculum. So again, how do we make sure we fit as much of this in in a way that continues to be aligned and gets to those learning foundations? Next slide, please. And so even as, we had a really robust conversation about this, the pilot team. And we have brought that recommendation to adopt to our elementary curriculum advisory committee. And we're now bringing that recommendation to you to adopt this as our TK curriculum. After this, if the board approves this, our pilot team will actually come back together and prioritize what are the most important pieces from this curriculum because there's so much that we are all gonna stay aligned on and teach, as well as create a daily schedule. Again, there's a lot of curriculum in here and so how do we make sure we fit in the most important parts throughout the day? And then we would support that with a professional development in August from the publisher. And then we continue to have a coach who's part-time devoted to really supporting TK and we would continue that work moving in next year. And embedding in that, there's some supports for the second adults as well. Questions?
Questions?
Sorry, you're all invited.
I needed that laugh. Continue. My question, do you guys, do you have?
No, go. You go ahead first.
I just want to let you eat.
Oh my god, this recording is gonna be awful.
My question is, now we've had TK, this is our second year?
Well, so small version TK before the full implementation, we're probably on year ten to fifteen. Since the rollout of the implementation, this is year three, I believe.
Okay, it's all like a blur, but my question is, it sounds like you had an assessment team, like the team that, a panel. Was that made out of existing? Okay, great. And then my question is too, is, you know, I think what's exciting about TK is like what that's gonna do to our pipeline of our students in the future. Does that at all inform some of the, okay, great. So you know where I'm going. So tell me more.
Yes, so a couple of things. One of the things we did when we first started TK is we actually did a survey of our kindergarten teachers and said, what do you most wish your kindergarteners would come? The number one thing was actually self-regulation. This was like right after COVID too. But it's self-regulation. As a mother of a kindergartner, I would love that. And it was social emotional skills, how to work cooperatively, basic number sense, knowing some letters, the letters in their name. But it was really around how to be in school. And so we've done a lot to think about how do we make sure we remain true to our values and what we know is developmentally appropriate for four-year-olds. Next year, some of them will be three when they come to us. So I think that's important perspective to remember. So how do we remain true to what we know is developmentally appropriate for young children, which is really play, curiosity, generating language and giving them some of the tools and structures to participate in kind of more increasingly academic and kind of more typical schooling experiences. And so those are some of the things we were really thinking about. And kind of what was the balance of all of that was a lot of the conversation that this TK team had. It was a really thoughtful pilot team. And I was in our final conversation and we talked for about two hours about the strengths, the challenges, what would be our next steps and so forth.
Thank you. That was my question. Okay, trustees? Any other questions?
I have no question.
All right.
I heard it.
I'm trying, I was looking something up, but I couldn't find it. What I try to say is, at the childcare commission meeting recently, one of our goal and priorities is to have more inclusive curriculum for TK. I know the district have done a good job, you know, we heard about the presentation few, the last meeting. I haven't heard much that is the case here. I just want to make sure that, you know, the curriculum is really inclusive and also can be modified as needed. Taking it especially at children, our students in mind in terms of serving everyone's.
That's a great question. So one of the really nice things about the preschool TK learning foundations is they're written as a developmental progression, so thirty-six to sixty months. Because we recognize that at these young ages, kids are at a really. Because we recognize that at these young ages, kids are at a really wide range of where they are developmentally, right? They might be at 60 months in their math skills and they might be at 40 months in some of their literacy skills or their oral language skills, for example. So that's kind of one nice thing about TK is that differentiation is built in. And so this curriculum in particular has that, um, as well. The other thing that, uh, and because it's play-based, what it does is it gives kids lots of entry points into the curriculum. Um, the other thing I wanna note is we've been having a lot of conversations about the Early Learning Center and how to really make that a school, right? Its own school. Um, and one of the things we have decided to do is purchase creative curriculum for all of the classrooms at the Early Learning Center. So their EI, which is their early, um, intervention special day class preschools, will have this same curriculum and then we'll make some modifications. Their TKK special day class will also have this curriculum and make some modifications. So you can imagine at this school, um, all of the classrooms will be working on the same themes, uh, right? Like going grocery shopping or seeds, but making those adjustments in order to fit the needs of their kids. And this will definitely support that work.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Um, the adoption of the new curriculum for transitional kindergarten?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee corner?
Second.
Second by trustee Rhoda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
And I can attach to this is, I just clarify, make sure we're good for this, is it, is the MOU for, um, for purchasing this curriculum? So I assume that all kind of comes with that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, math. Um, it's our favorite talk.
Okay.
Uh, so we also have been in a pilot process this past year for a new math curriculum. Uh, why adopt a new curriculum now? There's been an updated framework for California around math. Um, and so this is an opportunity to respond to that. Uh, we haven't had a new math adoption in our district for a lot of years. Um, I have to go back and look at the numbers. Um, we also have been doing some really great work through California Education Partners for the past three years. We had to pull out this year due to staffing shortages, but, um, that was really thinking about the framework and really thinking about what are the needs that our students continue to have in math in San Rafael? And how do we prioritize those? And so this actually comes kind of right on the tail of that work that we had already been diving into, which had been really powerful. Um, and so that's, that's part of why we're here right now. Um, let's see. So we started this work a year ago. And the first was against, we saw a similar, uh, similar process for all pilots. One is looking at the content standards and the framework and using that to make a rubric. Um, from there, we, the, um, we looked at those criteria and then we reviewed lots and lots of curricula. And, um, there was three that really met that criteria. So we brought those to ECAC. Um, and then, so that they could have a look and they said, yes, we think these are ones that should be brought to the pilot team. Our pilot team was, um, we worked to balance our pilot team as well as we can, having teacher representatives from all school sites as well as at different grade levels. So the goal is at least two teachers per school site in like a lower grade band and an upper grade band. Um, but to be really spread out so we can get some cross-representation. Um, our pilot team met in fall, finalized those criteria and then, uh, and as well as had some professional development around that math framework. So thinking about how, what is California asking us to shift in our teaching so that can really inform the work we're doing? So there's a lot of professional development embedded around that. Um, and then these three publishers came, they presented to the pilot team and the pilot team recommended two to move forward with, with a pilot. So we piloted, starting in November, most of the schools had a seven-week pilot for both curricula. Um, our, um, assessments coordinator did a phenomenal job of really making sure we were mapping for all of our students. So they would, even if they were piloting two curricula in their classroom, they were still getting taught all the standards this year. Um, so we made sure to account for that. Um, and in each one of those, we provided professional development on the curriculum being taught. At the beginning, there was an office hours, a weekend, so they could ask questions as they were implementing it. And then a midway point professional development and planning time, so they could make sure that they were implementing. When we're doing a pilot, we're really trying to implement the curriculum with fidelity so that we are understanding the full scope of the curriculum. Um, and, and each one of those had really long surveys, um, that teachers did afterwards. And then we collected that data, um, and went through, uh, they're, they're all linked in here, but there was an analysis done on all of the sections of that data. Compared those two curricula after teachers taught each of them. After that, we reconvened our pilot team. Um, I think that was in late March, early April, um, and we went through a consensus protocol. Um, that was, uh, the, the initial data was about 75% for one curricula, the other 25% for the other curricula, and went through a consensus protocol to see if we all could agree that this was something we could live with and/or support and were enthusiastic about. We got consensus, um, and are bringing to you guys a recommendation, um, for California Classroom Mathematics, California. Um, this is a curriculum that is published by iReady. Um, it's both in English and Spanish and we have it out here for you guys as well. Um, slides? Thank you. Um, so a couple kind of things just to note. Um, the, in terms of things that came out continually as things people really liked about the curricula, there was a lot of opportunity for student discourse, so talk around mathematical strategies. Um, there was regular comprehension checks, uh, and those can be shared with families. Uh, it was really teacher-friendly, so there were slides that can be used. Um, a lot of our teachers use Google Slides to help teach their lessons. Um, students were really engaged. Uh, it was also aligned with our, it's aligned with iReady, our diagnostic. Um, and there's some nice interplay in between those. So for example, if I do a comprehension check or if I do a beginning of unit assessment and I notice students are really, uh, you know, this kiddo is really struggling and is missing a certain concept, you can, um, plug that in and ask MYPATH, which is the individualized learning, to prioritize those lessons for that student. So, um, there's ways we can make sure we're using our, our MYPATH, our personalized instruction in order to, um, support students where they are in their mathematical learning to then help us align with this curriculum. Um, there, it's a lot, um, so you can see just from out there, it's, it's a lot. Um, and so that's, as we get to know any new curriculum, it's figuring out the strongest pieces and really using those. Um, there was a couple of classrooms that had some concerns about how do we differentiate for students who are far above grade level? Um, so that rigor, um, one of them, and this is like, uh, the exit tickets are embedded in the practice pages. And so you either have to look at all the books, you can't really tear them out for a teacher to see. Um, and that some of the review is a little less explicit than we would like. So those are some of the things we'll be having our eye towards. Um, after adoption and thinking about how do we work with the publishers and then with our own experts as we get to know the curriculum to account for some of those things.
So what's that, what are exit tickets again? It's, it's just the perforated rip?
Um, that, that is, uh, like a workbook. An exit ticket is, like, I teach a lesson and I wanna do a really quick check to see if kids understood what I was um, trying to talk about. Often teachers create like a little ticket, like hashy. Yeah, that's like one or two questions and it's just like, oh, kids write it on a slip of paper. And then I, as a teacher, can collect them and just real quick sort them because they're attached to the, this sounds silly, but it's big when you're a teacher. Because they're attached to the workbook pages, then there could be something on the other side, so then I gotta get a little creative.
Oh, yeah.
So.
That's extra time.
Molly knows.
Yeah. So, uh, some next steps, um, if the board approves for adoption tonight. We will work with iReady to, we have a couple of little things we wanna work with them on. Um, really the biggest thing is ordering. This would be a huge order. We need to get that in, plan for pallets for delivery. There's a lot of backwork to all of that. Um, we also need to line up professional development. Um, and we also, one of the things that came out of differentiated assistance was, um, a real heavy desire to support math professional development throughout the year. And so we will have an instructional coach, um, and this is something that Sandra Fells done in the past, devoted to supporting math implementation next year. Um, and we'll do learning labs, so they'll go in and work with a group of teachers to teach a lesson together and then do some planning based on that. Um, and so we'll be planning ongoing professional development for next year. And then we also, and again, this sounds kind of silly, but this is a big logistic hurdle, we need to box up all the old curriculum and get rid of it. And so there's like the physical materials that we have to manage, um, and a lot of that'll be happening in like June, July and August. And then there's the actual support and the implementation. And so, um, those are some of the things that we're thinking about. Um, I know that there's a question that did come up, uh, that was sent to me by some board members, so I just wanted to address that really quickly. When we think about the biggest challenges that our, our elementary students have in math, I would say there's three things. One is number sense. So if I pick up a, a thing of little teddy bears and I put them out, can kids do a couple of things? One, can they count them? Do they have that one-on-one correspondence? Two, could they estimate them? Do they know that this looks closer to five than it looks to 25? Right? So that's, that's kind of number sense. Do they know that five is smaller than 25? Do they have that kind of, uh, general understanding of how numbers work? So that's one thing. If kids don't have that, they can fake it until a certain point. I can memorize two times two. I can memorize my basic addition and subtraction. But when I start getting to multiplication, double-digit, triple-digit addition, doing things rounding in my head, I can't do it anymore, right? I don't have that base understanding. Um, so that's one. Another is fact fluency. So these sound in contradiction, but they're not. Um, and that is just, do I know my facts? Because again, when I get to fractions, when I get to multiplication.
COVID kids don't know their facts.
You don't know your facts, you're gonna have a hard time, right? Um, it's gonna, even though I might conceptually understand it, takes a really long time to draw 36 slash marks and then draw another 74 slash marks to count to get 36 plus 74. Um, which we have some kids doing, so we need to make sure they have some fluency as well. Another is word problems. Word problems are language-based, uh, they can be confusing. There's a couple of word problems I read a couple of times, um, to make sure I know what the question is asking me. So those are kind of the three big groups. I would say, uh, that come up as, as our biggest math needs. Um, a curriculum is not a magic bullet, and so I think that's the number one thing to remember. It is how does the curriculum interact with the pedagogy and the teaching we have, as well as the systems and structures we have around those. Um, and so a lot of the work that was started with that P3CC work was around routines. What are the daily routines we're doing at all of our grade levels to address number sense, fact fluency, um, and eventually word problems? And so this curricula builds in some really strong routines that grow from K through five that we can spend some time with our professional development, getting more and more solid on, that will continue to support as well as some additional practices built into those. Um, that will grow in particular the youngest grades, number sense. And then as they get older, there's some really great fluency routines as well as some, um, some word problems that we can, uh, work with. Um, the framework that they have is called Try, Discuss, Connect. And so it's really about how do I think about what I already know, my prior knowledge when it comes to a math concept? What are the multiple strategies I might use to solve that? And how do I start to play with that? How do I talk to my peers about that? How do I figure out where my strategies work and where they might not? And then how do I apply that? And so there, they repeat this framework over and over across the grades. Um, I think that was the main question I had. And the connections to iReady, but I think I talked about this a little bit. Um, I think I forgot that. Questions?
One.
Sorry, I feel like I was talking really fast.
One odd question. Do any, like, do any of these offer some kind of, like, satisfaction period? Or guarantee period, like how?
Six months or something?
Wait, which actually leads to the, the real question is how long does it usually take to understand if it's working?
It's a really good question. Um, I have not seen a curriculum that has a satisfaction guarantee. Um, that's gonna be a new question we start asking. The, so there's a couple of pieces. Uh, when you do an adoption, you assume you're gonna have it for five to 10 years. Um, so that's, I would say is a general assumption. It's a lot of work to do an adoption. So and then there's a lot of work in making sure that you're implementing it in alignment and with fidelity and best practices. Um, so that's why I would say five to 10 years, inching closer to the 10 most of the time. Um, in terms of our own contract, it's generally year-to-year. They do give a steeper discount when you do multi-year, um, and that's kind of typical of curriculum companies. I had one other question, I apologize.
No, I did, I did, it's, it's hard to judge these long things, like a long, a long way, yeah.
So one of the things you often see with a new curriculum is something called an implementation dip, which is when you first move to something new, it's harder, and so sometimes you see test scores go down. Um, we are not as a district implementing our current math adoption with fidelity. So I don't know that we'll see that. That's really hard for us to predict, just to be totally candid with you. Uh, yeah, so, you know, I, I think our expecta, what the look-for is I would have, let me reframe that. The look-for is I would have are, do we see really high levels of alignment across our, so vertically in our schools and then across all of our schools? Because one of the things when we're not aligned in what we teach is I, as a, as a kid, am so focused on the way in which you're trying to teach me, that I'm not able to have my brain really focus on the what you're trying to teach me. And so that alignment makes a really big difference. We're seeing that with foundations right now, which we have very high levels of fidelity with and alignment with. Um, so that's one thing. Another thing, the supported ongoing professional development, we're really making sure that we link it to the PLT work we continue to do, um, and so that we're having some real-time checks. Very often they're called a common formative assessments, to really be looking at, are our kids getting this? The last thing that we have done differently here is we have new report cards coming out where teachers have worked together to name the most important, we're calling them essential standards in each grade level and really focus our teaching more there. Um, so there's a lot of shifts happening, I would say, in our instructional practice in math in the next couple of years, but those would be the look-for is like I personally would have in thinking about, um, what do we need to keep doing with the implementation and what may we need to revise because we're seeing kind of some things coming up? Um, and then there's, there's just gonna be a lot of looking at the data, um, to see how we're doing.
Thank you.
Did you have any, Molly actually piloted, so I'm just wondering if she has anything to add?
No, I, I agree. I think just being honest about the implementation dip.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think from my person, I can tell you, I was on the pilot, the last pilot, um, and I was in my second year of teaching and I'm in my 19th year of teaching. So that's how long we had that adoption.
Wow.
For a very, very long time. Um, and it takes just like from a personal perspective, it takes me a couple of years to get into the groove of a new, because the first time you teach it, you teach it,
Yeah.
you're not really going back to that lesson and being like, oh, what worked, what didn't work. You're, you're going on, but you're constantly reflecting. So when you go back to it in year two, you're like, ah, I remember I taught this. I needed to change this little thing to make it more comprehensible or to make a long, a longer-term understanding. So I feel like it's like a couple of years to get into the, into the feeling of the, the rhythm of it and then what works and what's not working.
And so Stephanie, when you said that there's like a coach or whatever you said is going on, and you know, my biggest point is having twins and knowing that there's totally two different things happening in both classrooms, which I will, I will someday let go of that. But, um, but it's like, is there a way, like, if I'm a first-grade teacher at Laurel Dell and I'm a first-grade teacher at Coleman and I have an aha, is there like a chat situation that's like, lesson one, section seven is awesome, here's some highlights? Because you're so busy, right? But when you're doing your lesson planning at night, you might go back to that and reflect or if there's any way, that's hard for one coach to be like, oh, this school did that. I don't know, I'm just trying to think of.
So, so we've had some initial conversations. We've definitely gotten a lot of input from pilot teachers, ECAC and differentiated assistants about what this, what have been successful practices we've done over the past few years that have supported teachers in, uh, some pedagogical shifts in math. Um, the person who will be leading that work is currently full-time teaching. And so I have them coming out of the classroom for a sub-day in early May in order to plan how we're gonna do this. The short answer to that question is I think some of it can happen. So if this coach is leaning, uh, leading a learning lab in first grade at Laurel Dell, and then a week later is leading a first-grade team at Bahia Vista, the learnings that were had here can apply to Bahia Vista.
Exactly.
The question is, how does it link back to Laurel Dell at some point?
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we need some time to plan it,
Right.
which we haven't had, and then we're gonna need some time to learn. Uh, the goal is to do two learning labs at each school in every grade level. So by the second round, we will have kind of learned from the first round, right? Of like what worked well, what are shifts we need to. Of like what worked well, what are shifts we need to make? But that's gonna be an ongoing learning process for us as well.
Yeah, I just like, I'm wondering what technology is out there that they could be using and sharing, like, I don't know. Okay, sorry, I know we're, it's late on time. Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
Just, just for Craig, I mean, you kind of brought it up again and again about the time. And, and I just kind of listening to your presentation, it, that's a lot, you know? Lots to be asking for the kid, lots to be asking for the teachers. I'm not asking for you to, to give an answer right now, it's gonna be ten to eleven. But I just wanted, you know, thinking about, because the, the adaptation is very important, the implementation. It takes time, but you know, obviously if I were the kid, you know, who's gonna be in, in, in the first year, I want you to do it right in the first year for a first time, so that they're not the guinea pigs, right? So how, what can we do to support the teachers, support the implementation? Besides just to say as cool, you, you're getting what you, what you're getting right now, but what can we actually do better to provide the additional support that to make sure this actually do it right? You know, for the first time? Is it any additional resources that we support that we should be providing? And I guess the second question is, how can we get the buy-in from the parents? We want to make sure that they, they understand what you're doing too, because a change is scary for the parent. If they didn't know what you're doing and, and they, they make up their own mind, how can we actually also inform them and get their buy-in and make sure that they understand so they can support you as well? So I just, again, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I, I think it's important to do it right. And if you need more resources, you should talk to the superintendent.
She's used to be hitting, they're both used to be hitting the lot for.
Racing valid points. Let us come back in the school year, next year, and give you an update on how things are going and what we're looking for, what, what's working and what.
And how are we communicating? What are we using to communicate?
Let us come back and do that. We have a lot of legwork to do right now. We need your approval so we can do that.
Yeah, so she's saying vote.
That's a big fat hand.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the new math curriculum.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Rota, second by trustee Deanna Marsh. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Okay, we're moving on to.
Thank you. Acceptance of the Williams Quarterly Report for the periods January through March.
So I have the next three items, I'll try to be brief.
Did you hear that, team? Yep, three items, okay, brief.
This is the January through March 2025 Williams Quarterly Report, which is required by EdCode. The California EdCode and Assembly Bill 599 require that MCOE does a annually conduct, conduct. The staff annually does visits to schools that they have selected. This time was for Chair Linda High and San Rafael High for the fall of 2004, 2024, excuse me. The board is required to receive this report on any Williams-related complaints. One specific requirement that must be reviewed in the quarter report is the status of any teacher, misassignments and vacancies. We did have one misassignment at San Rafael. We had none at TL. The misassignment was for the 23-24 school year. It was specifically two classes that a teacher, two classes had a teacher who lacked the English learner authorization. With, and he has a CTE potential. This is for the construction pathway. That still remains unresolved. However, that teacher has submitted his resignation for the 25-26 school year. So it will resolve itself that way.
Okay.
And we are currently looking for another teacher for that position.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
We are seeking approval and acceptance of this.
Saying, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved by trustee Rota, second by trustee Deanna Marsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, Darlene, approval of 2425-61.
So this is for the week of May 5th through 9th as Teacher Appreciation Week. We are seeking approval for this resolution. This week is celebrated annually in San Rafael to recognize the consistently high level of work performed by teachers in our districts. SRCS teachers continue to provide our students with the knowledge and skills essential for lifelong learning, responsible citizenship and fulfillment of their greatest potential. And the board and district administration values and recognizes their commitment to the excellence. We are seeking approval for resolution 2425-61.
Thank you, Darlene. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve resolution 2425.61.
Second.
All right, moved by trustee Rota, second by Deanna Marsh. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, number six, human resources, resolution 2425.
So this is a resolution to designate May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as Classified Employee Appreciation Week. This is to recognize the event locally and to celebrate and honor the contributions of classified school support staff in the San Rafael Skid City Schools Elementary and High School Districts. This week is celebrated annually in San Rafael to recognize the consistently high-level work of work performed by classified employees in our districts. Our classified employees continue to display an unswerving commitment to our students, schools and communities. And the board and district administration are pleased to recognize all of our highly professional classified personnel this week. We are seeking approval of this resolution 2425-62.
Okay, do I have a?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee. We're thirsty tonight, let's go. Second. It's like, cause Rota's in. We're just trying to barrel through y'all. Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, now. Service services.
I got the next two items and I'll sort of talk about them together.
Two minutes?
So during, during the course of a bond program, there are, you sell series of bonds, right? Sometimes between three and five. In the high school district, we are ready to sell our next series. Sometimes you do that because of a cash flow. You're trying to keep projects going and you need to sell the bonds either earlier or later, depending on the projects that you have going. We also, that's the first resolution, 2425-65, to sell the next series of the high school bonds. We're also doing a refunding bond issuance. This is something that we do when we can get a better debt service rate on the new bonds. And then we can pay back the old bonds and we can save the taxpayers, you know, significant amount of money. I wish all the taxpayers were here to hear that. You know, would have gotten a few smiles maybe. But this is something that we do because it's good optics. It's good for the taxpayers and it helps when you potentially sometime in your future want to go out for another bond. And so that's resolution 2425-66. So I'm looking for approval for a resolution from item seven and eight.
Okay, team.
Can I, can I ask something real quick? Is the bond, is the bond rating the same or has it, has it been downgraded?
It's been pretty much the same since I've been here. I think we're double A too. Potentially in the past, it may have been higher, but it hasn't changed since I've been.
All right.
It's still, I think, bonds and Marin are.
Cause I saw something that I, I bond rating downgraded back in September, 2025. I wasn't sure if I'm right, so I.
I'll have to look into that. I will, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion? For number seven, to approve.
Motion to approve.
I second.
All right, my trustee Turner, second by doc, trustee Dr. Lau. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That motion passes. All right, numero ocho.
All right, oh, oh.
We just need a motion. We need a motion.
I was gonna reread it.
Number ocho, what?
Motion to approve, uh, resolution 2425-66.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moved by Deanna Marsh. Okay, great.
And we are tabling items nine and 10 until May 5th. So the last item for the evening is item number 11, donations.
Good move, let's go.
Everybody's favorite.
Yeah, $10 million for Oka, oh my god, Bob, it's amazing.
So tonight, we have the following donations received by the Santa Feliz City Schools. We have two Bahia Vista Elementary School from the National Park Trust, $700 for transportation to their Alcatraz field trip. Great. To Laurel Dell Elementary, which they seem to always be.
They're on the roll.
Pepe, Pepe kicked it off there.
We have $375 from Audi Marin for Walker Creek Scholarships. And not to be outdone, Toyota Marin also donated $375 for Walker Creek Scholarship. So there you go, Audis and Toyotas. Venetia Valley, K through eight, we had a donation of two iPad Minis and one iPad valued at $475 from Doug Brown. And then we had the Pacific Private Money Binding Machine. Oh, I think it's Pacific Private Money. Donated a binding machine
There we go.
for projects for $80. So if you need something put together. And Terreliana High School, one TL, their school foundation donated $650 for the science department STEM water kits. Total donation tonight, $2,655.
No sense?
No sense tonight.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.
We had to, uh, motion, motion to. Open it up, open it up again.
All right, open it up, all right, all right, all right.
Uh, motion to accept the donation, the generous donation from.
I second.
Second, moved by trustee Deanna Marsh, second by trustee Lau. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That motion passes. Now, closing it. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. And those on still online.